The motion is now in session pursuant to adjournment. May God bless this country and God bless this county. Mr. Chairman.
If you would remain standing, I will ask Reverend Todd Alexander if he will come forward and lead us in prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's pray. Father, we are truly thankful to live in this great nation, to live in this great state, and this great county. And Father, we come before you tonight asking for your presence, asking for your hand of blessing, asking for your favor to rest upon Sumner County, Father. God, I ask that the words of our mouths and the meditation of our hearts would be acceptable in your sight, oh Lord, my strength and my Redeemer. And we ask these things in the strong name of Jesus. Amen.
If you would remain standing, our clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Each Commissioner record your presence.
All right. It appears that we have 21 people here tonight, and of course, you very much are aware that still 13 will be a majority vote and a two-thirds vote were, all of that will remain the same. I only have information on Mr. Baker. He is out of town, and we have two other people that are not here. But we will proceed with the approval of the regular agenda. All in favor? Mr. Mansfield.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add an item to the agenda. This is something that passed Gen Ops in December and January unanimously. It's a resolution for a nonprofit donation pursuant to TCA 5-9-109 to 501(c)(3) for Westmoreland Quarterback Club to pay off debt incurred by athletic facility, an amount of $274,000, 272.08, and a memorandum of understanding and I so move to go under Gen Ops.
Motion and a second. So we will vote on that. It will take a 13 vote to add that to the agenda. Mr. Baker.
As the chairman of both the Education Committee and the Nonprofit Allocation Committee, neither one of those committees has seen this in their, on their agendas, so I'm definitely not going to vote for this. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Scho.
Mr. Chairman, this is just a point of clarification here. I, this item is, I believe, still technically with budget. We did not kill it. We just pushed this to the next budget cycle. So I think this is still with budget in that since it has not been discharged, I think we, you need a two-thirds vote.
Point of order.
Not anymore.
I think, I, I tend to agree with the attorney. I did consult with him on this when I heard that it may be a topic of discussion tonight, and he said that it would take a majority vote. So is that the way you still see that, Mr. Attorney?
At this point, I don't believe it's date certain. I don't know that a discharge is applicable here. I would still say it's a majority vote.
All right. And let me, I'm, I'm just going to have the attorney explain to you what will happen here. This is not going to be allocating funds tonight. Would, would you explain to them exactly what we will be doing so that we will not get any discussion when this comes up on the agenda?
Yes, I, I research, research this with Mr. Long as well, so we're in agreement that there's posting requirements that have to be done on this as a nonprofit donation. So there, there will be, we're not able to vote on appropriating the funds. The only thing that would happen is it put this on the agenda, and then it could be determined where it goes from there. But this cannot be a vote for the actual appropriation to make this contribution.
So as I'm, as I'm understanding the attorney, there should be, not be any really, any discussion on this matter. We, we would be voting if it is a positive vote next month after it's noticed and citizens have a chance to speak and so forth. And I hope everyone understands that, so we, we don't need to be here half the night talking about this. There's nothing we can do about it tonight. But I will, I have a few other people in the queue. Commissioner Mansfield.
Yes, sir. I'll just say that this is something that I was requested to bring forward back in November and start investigating. I went through Gen Ops in December, went through Gen Ops in January, passed unanimously among seven, seven members. Went to budget in, and December, went to budget in January, and it failed both times there. And I'm just asking to have this on that agenda for us to discuss this item, not to be lumped in with anything else, no other omnibus spending, just this alone. And I'm just adding, asking for this to be added to the agenda tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if we put it on the agenda, at least these people could, that came tonight could, could speak on the matter, is that correct?
If, there really is no need for anyone to speak on it per se. If, if it's on the Westmoreland issue because... You, they'll have that opportunity next month really to do that. Commissioner Scho, did you want to speak again?
I just have a question. If, if we're, if we're not, if this is not a motion, or if this is not a point to appropriate funding, what are we discussing? Like, what's the specific action that will result either positive or negative?
We're, as I understand it from the attorney, all we will be doing is voting to place this on the agenda basically for next month so that there can be public comment. I mean, we have to do that before dispersal of funds such as this.
So we would be, so, so we would, basically, we would be bypassing, we'd be bypassing budget, putting it directly on the, on the full commission next month. That's what this vote is to do.
That's basically, as I understand it, what would happen.
Got it. Thanks, sir.
And I will say that at first, I thought, I thought that it would require a two-thirds vote, but after the attorney explained to me his opinion on it, I, I tend to agree with him, but I thought the same as you at first in regard to that. Commissioner Becker.
I just want to sort of follow up on my earlier comment. I don't see how, why this went through Gen Ops at all. Again, it's either education, because it's correlated, or it's the nonprofit allocation committee, because it's, it's allocating money to nonprofit organization. So Gen Ops, I mean, we can send it through Health and Emergency Services too, but, but there's no, there's nothing there for a path through Gen Ops. So whatever we have beyond this, we need to go through a committee that actually makes sense for it to go through.
I, I agree with you on that. I think that if I had known in advance before this came up in General Ops, I would have suggested that it be in another committee. I think you're exactly right on that. But we're here, and we need to deal with it at this time. Commissioner Schmidt.
If we get this on the agenda, could we not vote to put it, to send it to education? And then we could hear, so if we, if we can add this to the agenda tonight, here...
That was not a part of the motion.
Okay. So, but if it is on the agenda, we would have that option.
The motion's been made and seconded.
Okay.
All right, we will vote. Commissioner Wynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the previous speaker's point, I'd like to offer an amendment to have this to be directed to the Education Committee as part of the motion. Thank you, sir.
All right, a motion and a second to direct this. This is an amendment. Pardon.
Is this just to get it on the, tonight's agenda to then talk about?
Yes.
Okay. Then, so we don't need, so we have decided what the amendment aim or what the motion is.
All right, let's vote on this before someone else wants to talk. All right. Does everyone understand what you're voting on? I hope no one says no, because we have a lot of people watching us, and we should know what we're voting on, okay? All right. All right. Madam Clerk, place that on the board.
Each Commissioner, record your vote.
With 14 votes, that will be an item of consideration next month for the commission. It was under General Ops. I mean, it hasn't changed. We didn't vote on anything else.
No, it's just, I'll bring it up on the backboard.
Yeah. We're not going to complicate things now. All right. Do we have, did, did we approve the regular agenda? All right, we have now approval of the regular agenda. All in favor, say aye. Pose like sign. Approval of consent agenda? All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Wynn, you got to be quicker.
Sorry, sir. I, I'd like to have items 2501, 03 through 05 removed from the consent agenda.
All right, 2501, 03, 2501, 05. Okay. All right, everyone got that? 2501, 03, 2501, 04, 2501, 05 will be removed to the regular agenda. And I think that we will place those, well, we'll just place those under the report of the chair. All three of those will be under unless I'm directed, otherwise will be under the report of the chair. Okay. I think it would probably be better to get them on out of the way early, but if you want to stay here all night and talk about them, we'll do that. Okay, yeah, we'll do that under legislative. All right. Here a motion on the consent agenda again. Second. All in favor, say aye. All right. Approval of minutes. All in favor, say aye. Pose like sign. We have a certificate of recognition tonight for a high school that represents a very special part of this community. I know we don't hear as much as we should probably about Westmoreland High School, but I'll tell you, they, when I ran for superintendent of schools, I met a lot of really fine people in Westmoreland, great people, and still good friends, as I've had the opportunity to talk with a number of people here tonight. And I'm so glad that Mr. Moss and Mr. Mansfield have asked to recognize the football team tonight. So gentlemen, and Mr. Wright, I'm sorry, Mr. Wright also. I think that'd be the whole, yeah, yeah. Football team, would you please come forward? And coaches, coaches, please. And I saw the principal, Mr. Duffer back there. Is, is Mr. Creasy here? Okay.
Wait, fill in right here. Yes, come over here, fill in right here. Keep on coming in, guys.
I love it. We need a bigger room. Folks, I have been blessed for about the last eight years to work just about every single Westmoreland High School home game. If you want to see what giving 110% looks like, come and watch these young men play on a Friday night. They put it all on the line. The 2024 Westmoreland High School football team consists of 58 players, three managers, and five coaches. The record for the 2024 season was 10 and 3. Losses include Marion County, who won the AA state title, 4A Macon County, who won the 4A state title, and 5A Portland, which they lost by two points. That was a heartbreaker. The team made it to the quarterfinals of the state. That has not been done since 2006. The team was undefeated region champs. That also has not been done since 2006. The team had 15 players recognized with region awards, two players recognized with 2A, all-state honors. The team had multiple players recognized on all Sumner County team, including the Sumner County Player of the Year and Coach of the Year. Coach Perry, love you to death, buddy. The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this, the 27th 27th day of January 2025, does hereby honor and congratulate the Westmoreland High School Football Team for all of their accomplishments during the 2024 season. Guys, this is well-deserved. Y'all are awesome. Some of y'all were my kids. You will always be my kids. I love every one of you. Coach.
On, on motion of Mr. Wright and second by Mr. Moss, all in favor, say aye. Pose like sign. All right. Parents, if any of you want to take a picture, now would be the opportunity to step up here and do it if you would like to. All right.
Hope you have a wide lens.
Students, if you did not get a medal, please raise your hand so these guys can pass one out to you. Okay. All right.
Sure. Get on up here, buddy.
I'm Coach Chad Perry, the head coach of this team this past year, and I'll be brief, but you know, the, the honor comes from the, the outpouring that we have in our community. These young men are great, and, and that's an understatement. We had our banquet last night, so I was long-winded and said a lot of things there, and I know people were tired of hearing my voice. But at the end of the day, what you're looking at is future leaders of Westmoreland and that community, and also leaders of Sumner County and some other places. And in the game of football, these guys learn what it means to work hard, to set goals, and to work hard to achieve those goals. And these young men, with a lot of young men, a lot of teams before them, that's, that's a thing that we have, and we take a lot of pride, pride in at Westmoreland High School, especially on our football team. So you know, these guys have been a blessing to work with, and what stands before you is a group of young men that just had a grit and a mindset that, you know, we went and played that football like it was supposed to be played. So we thank you for the recognition that you've given us tonight. I know these guys will cherish, cherish this for a long time, as well as our coaching staff and our high school, and we thank you for that.
I might risk giving away my age a little bit here, but I knew Chad when he was in high school, and I think he has two seniors on the football team. Would, where are your, raise your hand. Okay. So I've done it. I've given away my age, of course, but Chad, it's good to see you tonight, and congratulations.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. All right, at thi, at this time, we'll have recognition of the public. If that paper could be made available to me, please, sir. Please, ma'am. Mrs. Phillips. Hang guard Phillips. Monique Rittenbeck. Well, maybe they can get him, Mr. Duffer. We'll let them speak after.
Hi, I am Monique Ritterbeck. I live in Cotton Town, and I'm here today because I, well, I have a toddler now, and we love going to all the different libraries, and recently have enjoyed going to the Gallatin Library. There's a great coffee shop down the corner. It's fantastic. But you know, I need to share something that was quite disturbing for me about the infamous LGBTQ plus tree, that, the way that the people that gave the tree or sponsored the tree, they called it, the tree, it's, they said, "The tree supports your chosen sexuality." So I just want to remind us of what the word sexuality means. Sexual character, possession of the structural and functional traits of sex, recognition or emphasis upon sexual matters, involvement in a sexual activity, or in organism's preparedness for engaging in sexual activity. Okay? So that's like the sex word. Supposedly, this tree supports that. And I just wanted to remind us all that we started off this meeting today, we put our hands over our heart, and we pledged to the flag, and we said, "One nation under God." And so what I want to say is that I have every right to have the expectation that when I walk into the public library with my toddler, that he is not going to be put before him a tree that supports sex, and whatever sex you want to have with, whatever. Okay? I can't even believe that I couldn't just even enjoy, like, enjoy my Christmas season without having to deal with that nonsense. I left California for that. And I wanted to speak to the people of Sumner County, probably the ones who are not in this room, but if you do not wake up and pay attention to what is happening in your backyard, like, you're going to have to... backyard, like, you're going to have to, I mean, where are we going to go, you guys? Like, Tennessee's awesome. Okay? I left California, there's not a whole lot of places to go anymore. And I just want to say to you, just one more comment about "The Tree Supports Your Chosen Sexuality." What are the most cowardly ways to put it? "The Tree Supports Your Sexuality," whatever. What's actually happening, the leadership here, the library board, you are the ones supporting your chosen sexuality. So I really want you to just think about those toddlers. If I can't even trust the tree, how am I going to take my kid to preschool storytime and trust they're not going to be teaching them something weird about sex? That's my job, to teach them about how to be a godly man and a godly husband. So, I mean, I just, please back off, and God bless you.
Ms. Phillips. Mr. Duffer.
Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'll be as brief as I can be while giving you as clear of a picture of why I'm here tonight as I can. In 2011, I became the high school principal at Westmoreland High School, and 40 years ago, I wore that red and white, and I was a part of that same football team that those young men stood up here and took great pride in representing. I have a vested interest, because I've been there my entire life. I'm a product of Westmoreland High School. I played on the football team, and I came back there and I coached for a period of time before going away to Beach High School, Portland Middle School, and finding my way back home at Westmoreland High School. That same year in 2011, a gentleman by the name of Dale Phillips became the director of schools in Sumner County. He and I began to talk about the needs that both he was confronting and that I was confronting, and both of us had our plate very full. I began to look at priorities at Westmoreland High School and things that I wanted to improve upon. I looked at and created a list. On that list were desires and dreams and absolute necessities. One of the things that we absolutely identified and knew that we were going to have to do is create a new opportunity for a fieldhouse. Why did we need a new fieldhouse? The previous one, the one that we were using, had been built 50 years prior, excuse me, it's 50 years old now. Over the period of years, it had flooded, and the walls had become permeated, saturated with water, and there was much moisture beneath the slab and in the walls. When the humidity would rise in the summertime, we found mold and mildew regularly. We sprayed so much bleach trying to kill it that our walls began to deteriorate, and it truly was a hazard. This was not something lavish and luxurious that we set out to do. It was very much a necessity. So I asked Dale Phillips, "What can we do?" He said, "Rick, I just cannot commit or provide funding for an athletic facility. However, I offered you a compromise. I will provide you the opportunity, along with all high school principals, capital money that is discretionary, to be used as you see fit." And he did just that. He was a man of his word. But I represent, as you represent, multiple high schools, I represent multiple programs, multiple different students pursuing various activities. I could not take the entire sum of money, which, again, I make clear, all high schools receive the same amount. I could not take that sum of money and give it solely to the football program. That would be unfair. That would not be prudent, and it would not be good leadership. So as best I could, I dispersed that money to the multiple programs, soccer, softball, baseball, basketball, cross-country, track, band, et cetera. Over the next few years, between the football program itself, the quarterback club, and the capital money, we came up with $600,000. We were shy of what we needed to build this facility. I asked Dr. Phillips, "If we build now, can I use future capital disbursement to pay this loan off?" He said, "Once you build it and someone signs that note, that note, as a private citizen, Board of Education money cannot be used to pay back the loan." He said, "But the county commission, if they so chose, could help in the future." So I said, "I'm not going to do that. I'm going to wait." In talking with contractors, he said, "You're saving about $50,000 to $60,000 a year? At that rate, inflation is going to outpace what you're able to save." He said, "You're going to save $50,000 next year, and the cost may increase $75,000." So at that point, we decided to build a fieldhouse. We built that fieldhouse. 10 people in the community signed a private note guaranteeing the remaining balance, and what was over $300,000 in debt is now $274,000. It is not lavish. It is not luxurious. It is a responsible decision to meet the needs of our kids who stood before you tonight. And it's not black and white. In and of itself, it's not binary. I realize, you can find 10 reasons to say no, but if you search, you can find 100 reasons to say yes. $274,000. In a county like Sumner, we have the money. It is available, and you can make it available to these young men, to our coaching staff, to our community, and to Westmoreland High School. I realize we're going to take action on this next month, but I just wanted you to know the facts surrounding this and why we're here tonight, and what we hope to achieve going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Inharod Phillips, and I am a candidate this evening for the Sumner County Ethics and Conduct Commission. I have spent the last 25 years working in the corporate world, but today, I am an American citizen and a military wife and mother. I was nominated for this position due to my professional background, academic qualifications, and experience working in policy, strategy, and corporate communication departments, and working in conjunction with general counsel, legal, and enforcement teams. I was a banker for many years for a global institution, and then I held a government position as a financial services regulator for 10 years, where ethics, fairness, transparency, due process, and compliance was at the heart of everything I did. As a public servant, my priority was to further the public's trust in government and ensure that fair principles guided that process. As leaders, you know full well that ethics plays a crucial role in guiding the actions of others and ensuring that they act in the best interests of the community and constituents. Ethical standards is rooted in principles such as integrity, honest, accountability, and fairness. I understand and appreciate that sustaining the public's confidence in government can lead to ensuring well-represented, functional, and healthy communities. Being able to boost government transparency can reduce risk, prevent misconduct, prevent reputational damages, damages, and amass legal fees. Promoting fair policies and procedures to all will maximize the likelihood of achieving good governance, healthy leadership, and highly functional communities. I have read the Code of Ethics and of Conduct for Sumner County, an impressive document. I would be honored to join the committee tasked to hear complaints, prepare documents without prejudice, and work within a framework that adheres to applicable state laws and local regulations. Complying with these responsibilities and making fair decisions that respects participants' values, concerns, and interests is a task that is familiar to me. I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Kevin Baker.
Kevin Baker, 424 AB Wade Road. I'm not sure I ever had this kind of an effect on a crowd that everybody leaves before I get to saying anything. You know, as I sat here and I, I watched those fine young men from Westmoreland, I could just think former Commissioner Mo Taylor looking down and smiling. But I also can see a little tear in his eye when, when he thinks about how Westmoreland's been on the short end of the stick for years, but we'll talk about that next month. I'd like to give a shout out for the Sheriff's Department for their surplus equipment. I thought it was excellent to see photos, so nobody can question that the chairs aren't rusty, and it was excellent. Good job, Sheriff. Okay. Regarding 250110, the Board of Education reviews safety traffic concerns. Just for the record, this issue has been a citizen-driven issue for several years now. Okay? Aside from what some people were saying on, on social media, that a bunch of commissioners, no, the commissioners were just doing what citizens came to them and asked them to do. So kudos, I support this. We need to get that whole issue resolved. And again, it was a citizen-driven issue. Regarding the $321,000 for the, the estate for Hendersonville Library, I would just like to comment this is, before we get too deep into this, A, we ought to know and understand who the trustees are that are going to control this money, and make sure we don't invest it with Vanguard. Regarding 250112, authorizing the law director to make proposal for Elections Commission, outstanding. You know, last month, we, we talked about having to transfer $8,000 or so into the Elections Commission for travel. Well, maybe you wouldn't have to be spending that money if you didn't have to drive halfway across the county to your other facility. If it was right behind us here. It also, from a customer standpoint, if I'm a citizen coming in here to take care of my election requirements, I want to have a one-stop-shop. Okay? I don't want to have to, well, you got to drive across town and go here and go there. No! It should all be here. It, it's the right thing to do, so I applaud the effort. Regarding the termination of the TDEC contract, again, yes, remit those funds back to TDEC. You know, and, and again, just to, for the record, the fact that, that Mr. Brown left $500,000 for, for that park, and there wasn't even a single reference to that in the appropriations of $1.12 million, I mean, that's just, that's just a sin. So I'm, I'm looking forward to the resolution of this whole thing. And honestly, I'm looking forward to next month resolving this issue at Westmoreland. Thank you.
Mike McCleod.
Mike McCleod, 102 Teoga Trail. Before I get started, I want to talk about the, the traffic that Kevin was talking about there at Hunter's Lane. But before I say that, I grew up in Macon County, so we were always rivals with Westmoreland. But tonight, go Eagles. I mean, it must be a pill or something I'm taking. It gets me weepy. I, I used to not be like this, or could you just be the age, Mr. Hyde, I'm catching up with you? He's just more dignified than I am. As Kevin said, we've been dealing with this situation ever since the school opened up. In the original plans, the, the intersection of Hunter's Lane and Wolfpack was supposed to be a locked gate, emergency exit only. That's what it was supposed to be. The second exit out of that school was actually, it was right about where the middle school is now, cutting straight across the fields over to Long Haul Pike. Now, I'm not sure why that fell through. I, I never did, I never did get the gist of that. I don't know if they couldn't secure the property. I certainly would not have wanted them to try to take it from somebody, or whether it was deeded, but that all changed. After the, it was no longer a locked gate, it was going to be a three-way stop. Now, we have a superhighway coming up out of Wolfpack. As people start up through that hill, they just keep gaining speed all the way to the top. It's a 35-mile speed zone, except, you know, down in Wolfpack, it's 25 or 15, depending on the time of the day. But the traffic was backing up so bad to try to get into elementary school, they were backing up the turn lane into Wolfpack, across into the three-car turn lane to go on up Hunter's, and then on up the hill. That, thank God, has finally, at this point, maybe, I'm real positive there, is taken care of. The principal sent out emails to her parents, did absolutely no good. The superintendent sent out an email, and with the Sheriff's Department's help, and I, Sheriff Craddock stepped, "There you are. Thank you so much." The first day he was down there to stop that traffic, he was pulled up, so no one could make that left turn into the school. Cars would come up and line up behind him. He wore himself out the first day. I stood up, I stood at the top of the hill watching him. He'd get out and tell them, "You got to go around, go down, and come back." That worked great. It has been working great until today. I was down there today, and there were two or three cars had already lined up, because, because he's no longer there, the sheriff doesn't have the manpower to keep somebody there all the time. They were starting to line up. Now, today, it was two, three cars. Next week, it'll be more, and after that, it'll be more and more and more, because people are just like water. They're going to take the path of least resistance. So I'm afraid, Sheriff, we are going to have to have you back out there. You're not paying a bit of attention to me, but that's okay. I, I think at some point, you're going to have to be out there sporadically to keep them, because as I said, once two or three people get in line, it's just going to start all over again. So, but that part is, right now, is working pretty good. They're not backing up. We can actually get to our neighborhood, which is the first time since that school opened that we have been able to do that. Our, our superintendent does not return emails or phone calls to concerned citizens. Maybe he's not supposed to. I don't know what rules are in place for him. I myself left three messages on the phone and three emails, and to this day, I've never received a, a response back. Now, I'm nobody, and that's okay. I'm just a concerned citizen and a taxpayer. But if he is not elected official, but the people that hire him are, just like you guys are, all elected officials. You serve at, at the whim of the people, basically, and get no response out of him, which is very disappointing. Thank you to Jeremy and Tim Jones and, and Jamie, Jamie, for all your help, Mr. Klein, trying to get all this straightened out. But, but I really think, I know at some point, Wolfpack has been designated to maybe become a county road. I would not, if I were in your positions, not allow that to happen until there is a permanent situation. My recommendation, and I'm not a traffic person, Mr. Ellis would have to tell you, but the, there needs to be a stoplight, or it's not a stoplight, a stop sign coming out of Wolfpack, so to stop that flow of traffic up that hill and make them, make them slow down at least for a moment. And secondly, a roundabout down in front of the high school or middle school where the big turn-in is, wouldn't cost that much money, I wouldn't think, to just enlarge it, so those people that have to make that turn can go down there and do it.
Thank you, Mike. Reverend Todd Alexander. I doubt Reverend Alexander will be back. I pressed him into duty to pray for us tonight when I spotted him, but he's here to speak to us on another issue.
And you added the Reverend, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Todd Alexander, 217 Strange Circle here in Gallatin. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the appointment of Eric Stockton and Mike Ray to the library board. I believe both of these men to be great role models in the lives of their family and the way they conduct themselves. They both are raising successful children, and that is so important in this day that we live in. They have proven success in their businesses as entrepreneurs, and they're involved in our community. That's how I first met them, was through community events. They're exactly the kind of concerned citizens we need, providing leadership. They're exactly the kind of concerned citizens we need, providing leadership on this board, and I urge you to approve these two gentlemen. I also want to thank this commission for allowing me to serve on the Ethics and Conduct Committee for the past two years. Thank you Mayor Isbell, I think, for nominating me. I've almost forgiven the commissioner that nominated me to be chairman, almost. But I contacted Chairman Hyde last fall and told him I would be stepping down from the committee to pursue serving in other areas. But I completely support the recommendations for the Ethics and Conduct Committee moving forward as well. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Mike Ray. Mike Ray. Mr. Mike Ray.
Hey, guys. My name is Mike Ray. I live at 929 Aqua Drive here in Gallatin, just down the road. I applied for the Library Board position back in May of last year. So, it's been a while, and I thought that I'd introduce myself, so y'all could put a face with the name. I feel like I'm always hearing the word transparency around here, so I made sure that I put my phone number and my email at the very top of my bio, so anyone that wanted to get to know me could reach out, so they could make an informed decision before they vote tonight. I've only spoken to a couple of you, so here's me in a nutshell. I moved to Hendersonville when I was 12. I moved to Gallatin when I was, in 2016. In that time, I've owned several personal homes, as well as investment properties in Sumner County. I started out my adult life as a plumber. I owned my own company for several years. My wife and I, of 27 years, started buying real estate in 2005, and we're still fairly active in that space, but we also enjoy having more time to travel and to serve our community. As an investor of several multifamily properties over the course of 20 years, it's been crucial for me to be able to communicate effectively with every member of my team to achieve a common goal. My experience has taught me that the best way, and in fact, the only way to do that, is from an honest and transparent position rooted in biblical principles. In fact, that's non-negotiable. Does any of that make me qualified for this position? I don't know. You guys will have to decide. Does it mean that I have the Library Board figured out? No, it doesn't, and you don't have anyone else that has it figured out either, but that's why we have a board. I'd be the new guy, and I'll need to lean on my team, but I tell people all the time, if you're honest and you're willing to work, then you're halfway there, and that's my promise. I'm not a politician. I'm a Christian, a husband, a dad, and a small business owner with a blue-collar root. I didn't apply for this position to make myself feel important, for clout, or anything like that, because it isn't about me. I applied because I think the citizens of Sumner County, the families, the kids, deserve more honest leaders to help make decisions for them, not politicians. Now, many of you will not vote for me tonight, mostly because you don't know me, but maybe you've already made up your mind, based on a short bio, maybe my Facebook profile, or because you've heard some gossip. That's fine. I didn't get up here to sell myself to you. God will put me exactly where he wants to. And I'm not for everyone. And if you don't like what I'm, what you're hearing right now, I'm probably not for you. I am for my neighbors and my community members who love some good old common sense, the kind that you would expect to hear in the South. We love people, we love the truth, and we love Jesus. And I'm gonna close with this. Regardless of your vote tonight, please remember that your job is to listen and represent the people of Sumner County. Are you listening? That lady that was up here at the very beginning, are you listening to her? I hope you are. It's not about you, it's not about politics, it's not about an agenda. It's about choosing what's best for our community. Thank you.
We, we will get through this a lot faster if we just hold our applause. I know that these people have a lot of support, and we know that, but we need to move on. Mr. Gibbons?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jerry Gibbons. I live at 135 Hunter's Lane. My driveway is right smack dab by the top of the hill. They put up the sign, they've also put up the rumble strips. I've seen many, many times where people come up from the schools, and rather go over the rumble strips, they'll go into oncoming traffic, and then back in and keep on going. So, somewhere along the line, there's gonna be an accident there, a big one. When we come out of our driveway, we have to pull out and gun it to make sure that somebody doesn't tail at us. I ride a motorcycle sometimes. When I pull out, I gotta really gun it to get away from the people. And so, we've had good, good experiences with the, the county people putting up the signs and stuff. We appreciate that a lot. But we, somewhere along the line, we gotta still figure out a way to fix that situation. So, I'll leave that up to you, but it's really, really an important thing. Thank you.
Ms. Overton?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kimberly Overton. My address is 104 Gleno Court West in Hendersonville. I'm a registered nurse with over 28 years of experience working in healthcare, and I'm a Sumner County resident of over 20 years. I'm here tonight to express my sincere interest in serving the County Ethics Committee. With a deep-seated commitment to ethical standards at community service, I would welcome the opportunity to contribute my expertise and perspective to the committee's important work. As the founder of the Nurse Freedom Network, I have dedicated myself to advocating for ethical practices and transparency within healthcare. The organization was established with the vision of creating a supportive environment where nurses and other medical professionals could freely discuss and address ethical dilemmas and challenges that we encounter regularly in our profession. Through this initiative, I have gained profound insights into the complexities of ethical decision-making and the importance of integrity and professional conduct. In addition to my work with the Nurse Freedom Network, I also oversaw the formation of a private membership association, Remnant Healthcare, which is committed to providing safe, affordable, and compassionate patient-centered healthcare to all those who seek out our services. These initiatives have equipped me with the unique understanding of the necessity for clear ethical guidelines and the promotion of ethical behavior in all professional spheres. I have led numerous conferences, workshops, and seminars focused on ethical practices, rights, and responsibilities in nursing, which I believe are directly applicable to the broader objectives of the County's Ethics Committee. I'm particularly interested in ensuring and enhancing transparency and accountability within the local government's agencies. I would appreciate the opportunity to bring my background in healthcare ethics to complement the efforts put forth by the commission, to ensure that our community not only maintains, but strengthens its commitment to ethical governance. I am confident that my professional experience and my ethical advocacy make me a suitable candidate for this position. I am committed to working collaboratively with other committee members to address ethical concerns and foster an environment of trust and integrity within our community. I humbly ask for and would greatly appreciate the full support of this commission and allowing me the honor to serve and contribute to the community's work, the committee's work, sorry. Thank you for your consideration and for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Commission, I'd like to say that Ms. Overton received a positive recommendation that was inadvertently left off the agenda, and the chairperson asked me to remind you of that, but she did receive a positive recommendation. Thank you. Mr. Stockton?
Good evening. My name's Eric Stockton. I live at 445 Cummings Lane here in Gallatin. I'm a business owner in this community for the last 23 years. I've been married for 23 years to my wife Toni. We have four children. And I'm here to talk about my vote to, they're gonna vote to have me on the Library Board along with Mike, who is a friend of mine, and I, I can attest to everything that he said about his convictions and the kind of man he is. And Monique, I want to thank you for coming up here and talking about what you, about the things that you had to face with your child in the library. That's why I'm here. I was here last month to be voted on, to stand against stuff like that, but I was voted down by this commission right here. So, I hope you will take time to talk to them if they, if they do vote me down again tonight. I was told when I was, when I was here, I was told that I was unqualified. So, I wanted to take time to look at the bylaws, and I'm gonna go ahead and read the bylaws of what the qualifications are to be on the Library Board. Y'all ready? "The boards shall be composed of 11 members who are residents of Sumner County." That's it. I'm qualified. I was told I was unqualified, even though there's three positions available. It was an either-or vote when there were three positions available. So, I was asked if I had grant-writing experience. I said no, but I am recognized by the State of Tennessee and the federal government as a licensed financial advisor and fiduciary with a zero complaint record, impeccable record. I manage over $300 million in assets for my clients. I think I can figure out how to write a grant if, if the board needs help in getting money. I think I can figure that out. I'm a little excited, as you can tell, because I have a righteous anger in me. I cannot stand the fact that your child had to see that, and that's what I would be standing against. That's it. So, if people don't vote for that, they're voting for that. And I have no control, I have no, they have to answer for that, but God will not be mocked. He will have the last say on that, and if it's me to be there, great. If not, that's fine. I'm here because I was asked to be here to represent. I'm just as busy as everybody else, but I want to make sure that I can lay my head on my pillow and know that if a child walks into the library, they're not gonna have to be faced with sexually explicit material. It's ridiculous. It's time to put this away. Our country has spoken very loudly already, and that's why I'm here, and that's what I'm convicted to do. Now, whether they vote for me or not, that's up to them, but they'll have to answer to you, and hopefully, we'll, we'll get it right this time.
I will ask the attorney to start, start the clock on the next person, so that you'll be taking away their time if you continue to applaud. Ms. Ray? Ms. Ray, Kate and Ray? I'm sorry, Kate.
What's up, Commissioners? This is a room full of beautiful people, dude. Good grief. I'm nervous now, but I got a little something prepared, so. My name's Kate and Ray. I'm 19 years old, and last year, I started attending the city council meetings in regards to the installment of a subdivision on Lockport Road, which is where I lived. Man, I'm disappointed. Like, I really only started paying attention a year ago. I was like, dang. You know, like, I'm not, I don't mean to be disrespectful, I don't mean to be rude, but I went up to speak, and people played on their phones while I spoke about my concerns for my community. They laughed, they, they were just not present. One night, I walked up and I said, "Yeah, you know, what's up, Council? How's it going, guys? I know you're like sick and tired of seeing me," and, you know, kinda like joking around, and one of them was like, "Yes." And I was like, dang, this is the people we got, like, running around calling the shots and stuff. So, long story short, something's gotta change, y'all, for real. Like, I can't believe that this is like government. Like, I was raised for like 18 years, homeschooled, public schooled, all the things, man. They're like, George Washington's a hero, government officials are awesome. I graduated, and I was like, this is not true. They lied. So, anyways, but also, some of you are wonderful, I'm sure. This is just my personal experience. I'm sure you guys are fantastic. We can get dinner after, rub elbows. But I've only got enough change on me for Arby's, so I hope you guys are cool with that. But anyways, long story short, I'm obviously Mike's son, so that makes me a little biased. So, like, but also, I'm a good one to talk to, because I've, I've lived with him for 19 years, let me tell you. That's a good dude right there. That's a good guy. But we'll talk about that later. I'm not related to Eric Stockton in any way. No blood connection, nothing like that. Something that I do know, I can speak confidently about his character, as well as his wife's and his household. I've been friends with his son for a couple of years, and, as well as his other family, and I can speak very confidently when I say that Eric and Tony Stockton are here, and they're committed to upholding the truths and ethics that this, that this country was founded on, for sure. They are the change I'm looking to see within this government. I want my kids, you know, maybe in 10 years or something like that, I mean, that's, that's kinda soon, maybe, maybe 12 years. But I want my kids to be able to grow up in the same kind of Sumner County I grew up in. They deserve that right. This isn't California. This isn't another country. This is Tennessee. This is Sumner County. I love it here. It's a beautiful place. I'm never leaving. Can we keep it that way? And, I mean, I just really hope I can count on y'all, you know? Like I said, I might be raising a family in 10 years. So, anyways, if you want change, it's Eric, it's Mike, and, and whoever comes next that is a Christian conservative that supports the correct Christian ethics that this country was founded on, that's, that's your guy. That's who you're looking for. So, anyways, y'all have a blessed night.
Amber Summers. Amber Summers? The clock is running. I apologize.
Hello. I am here to support the appointment of Mike Ray and Eric Stockton to the Library Board. I'm very close to Mike and his family. I would just like to start off by saying I don't like public speaking, and I'm very nervous, but whenever it comes to Mike, I just had to. Sorry. Mike is the type of guy to be upfront with you and the type of person that you want on your team. If he says he's gonna do something, he's gonna do it, and he's gonna do it great. He's very trustworthy, and ever since I've known him, I know that I can count on him. I think that all of Gallatin would be missing out if he wasn't a part of the team. That's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The Veterans Service Report you will find in your packet. Financial Statement also is available there, and written reports filed by county officials. At this time, we'll have our notary election. Do I have a motion? Motion and a second. That will be on the board, folks.
Each Commissioner, record your vote.
All right, with a vote of 21 to 0, that does pass. We will have our reporters standing committees after a 10, 10-minute break. It's about an hour and 5 minutes, so we'll be back in 10 minutes. back in 10 minutes. Mr. Becker is chairman at this time. I just wanted to say one quick thing before we get into committee on committees. In regard to the Ethics Committee, I just wanted to let you know that I have a little bit of problem with that policy and the way it is written. For one thing, I think that, just like Congress, I think the body ought to regulate itself. And then, secondly, there are some things mentioned in the Ethics Policy that is a real problem. And one is that we would have jurisdiction over public utility districts. That is absolutely not possible, nor legal. So, I would like a total review, and I'm going to bring that up. If someone asks that this just be postponed, I'm going to ask that we review the makeup of the Ethics Committee and the policy at the next meeting. I just wanted you to know where I stand on it, because I may end up, if, if this, this is not done, voting for the same people that are up now. But I really would like to see a review of the committee and the makeup. Health and Emergency Services?
I have to say is, we, we voted to piggyback and support the resolution that came out of Highway. And just, just on that, we just, we appreciate everything that's been done for the citizens in that area around Liberty Creek Elementary. And it was a safety issue. And, and I don't know, I don't know for sure all the, all the details about what needs to happen. So, the only request was for the committee was just that it be passed on and just asking that the school board would look at it and just see what they thought was best and kinda input their wisdom with it. So, thank you.
Education? General Operations. And on this issue, the, pardon me, okay, Highway. Sorry about that. Highway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a resolution come out, a resolution requesting the Sumner County Board of Education to review the safety and traffic concerns at the Liberty Creek campus. And before I read that, I just wanted to shine light on what it was so people would understand it fully. If you've not been coming to the Highway Committee meetings, which they're not usually the most popular in town, but they've been pretty lively this year. The citizens have been complaining about this issue, this traffic issue, since August of '22, the month before we came into office, this, this current commission. But we've heard about it several times along the way as well, about the traffic concerns there at Liberty Creek Elementary School. And it's the design of the roadway, and what's happening is, the road that's Hunter's Lane, that's decades old, goes along and then makes a sharp left turn. That's the way it's always been. Well, right there at that corner, they put Wolfpack Way as a three-way intersection right there. To fix the problem that they thought would happen, they put a turn lane in to where the people going on into Hunter's Lane into their neighborhoods, they put a long turn lane for them, dedicated left-hand turn lane. After you get through that intersection, there's another turn lane that turns left into Wolf, into Liberty Creek Elementary School. Well, when parents start lining up to pick up or drop off their kids, they fill that proper turn lane, and then they proceed to back it all the way up through the intersection into the incorrect left-hand turn lane. And then everybody shuts their cars off and waits 15, 20 minutes. They park it in the middle of the road to where nobody can go home. The people trying to go home are stuck in that line. They're just sitting there waiting, or they risk it and go off into oncoming traffic and drive down the wrong side of the road till they get around that curve and then go home. So, we've been talking about this issue for a long time in, in Highway. And if you remember, a few months back, we had a three-hour-long Highway Committee meeting. This was wild. We had an hour and a half. We had an hour of just solid citizens coming up complaining about this issue and making it aware to the commissioners. And I'm glad they did, because otherwise, we wouldn't have known this was a problem. I don't live out there. But we, we understood that there was a problem there and are trying to come up with a solution. Because here's the thing, that's an existing road that's got the problem, the traffic concern, but it's a future road that we're gonna adopt Wolfpack Way, which is a school road right now. And it has caused the problems. So, we need to come up with a solution for this. That being said, we've, I've talked to Director Langford through email. I've talked to Road Superintendent Ellis. He has talked to Director Langford, and I think Director Langford has talked to the Sheriff's Department. But not everybody's ever gotten on the same room at the same time to come up with a answer. Everybody's pointing the finger at whose fault it is. The Sheriff's Department says they don't have the budget to keep somebody out there all the time. If they did, they would have to put somebody directing traffic at all the county schools if they did that. But because of the safety concern, they have put somebody out there recently. And it's been reported by citizens, like you heard tonight, that it made huge improvements to have a police officer sitting in that turn lane to not allow parents to get in that turn lane. And it forces them to go on up to Wolfpack Way and get in the turn lane there. Well, the director took the advice of the superintendent, I mean, of the Road Superintendent, and Director Langford did, and he implemented, sent out a memo to all the parents directing them to just go ahead and make the turn on Wolfpack Way, go down a ways, I guess you choose how far, and do a U-turn, then come back on Wolfpack Way and line up for school and turn into our parking lot with a right turn only. Citizens in the area have said this has alleviated their problem going into their neighborhood. There's no more backup of traffic. Nobody parked in the improper left-hand turn lane. Traffic's flowing smoothly there. But now, all the parents are mad. All the parents and schoolkids are mad because they have to line up down Wolfpack Way. But I wanted to read the first part of the memo that was sent out to the schools. Dear Liberty Creek Elementary Parents, Families, over the past few weeks, we've been working with the Sumner County Sheriff's Office to adjust our dismissal process after a few county commissioners complained regarding traffic on Hunter's Lane. Then he goes on to explain what his suggestion for the fix is that I just explained. Nothing could be further from the truth. It was citizens that were complaining and us listening to the citizens. That's a government working like it's supposed to work. We're seeing a problem. We're seeing, trying to come up with a solution. And it may not be Highway's job to come up with a solution, because it's a school road right now. But it is Highway's job to make it known to everybody that we need to do something about this. We've, we've gotta fix this problem. The U-turn idea is working for now, but it is not sustainable. I was made aware, just before I came here, a parent told me, I drive a work truck to drop off my daughter for school. I, I drive a work truck to come pick her up. Sometimes, I'm pulling a trailer with a mini excavator behind it. I can't do a U-turn on Wolfpack Way. So what am I supposed to do? It's, it's always worked fine when I, when I could turn left into the school, but I can't turn right? I can't go down there and do a U-turn and come back. So, this is not a sustainable solution. We've gotta do more. So with that, I'll read the resolution. And I'm open to suggestions for amendments, or if we wanna create a committee to look at this or whatever. But I'm gonna read this just so we can vote on it and, and see what changes may come from it. Oh, also, there's another problem with the traffic in general, and it's, as the kids, all the parents leave that area, there's only two ways out, one over by New Hope Road, and the other one is on Long Haul of Pike at the intersection of Latimer Lane. And I just wanted to give an update on that. There is a traffic light in the works for that, but it is off in the future. I've talked to State Representative Johnny Garrett about that, and he said that a traffic study has been ordered or is already on the way. study has been ordered or is already on the way, under route going on with that. So hopefully, we can expedite that once we do hear a timeline and when they're suggesting it. But here's the resolution. Be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this 27th day of January 2025, that this body does hereby request the Sumner County Board of Education to review the safety and traffic concerns at Latimer Lane and Hunter's Lane, Latimer Lane and Long Hollow Pike, and Hunter's Lane and Wolfpack Way. And be it further resolved that the Sumner County Commission encourages the Sumner County Board of Education engineer to revisit the road layout with special attention to safety concerns and illegal traffic patterns. Be it further resolved that this resolution has a positive recommendation from the Sumner County Health Emergency Services Committee. It was passed 100% with HEMS and with the Highway Committee. So with that, that's my motion.
A motion and a second. Commissioner Cho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've got no issues with this resolution, but at the end of the day, like, we can describe problems and we can, like, hand stuff back and forth, but it's going to be frustrating if you're a human being driving on that road. Like, at the end of the day, here's what it comes down to. We're going to have to make changes to the road. Somebody, whether it's the schools or us who oversees it, is somewhat irrelevant, because if both of those pots of money ultimately come from the county. So we have a problem, the problem needs to be solved. The way to solve the problem is going to be some adjustment to traffic pattern and Highway infrastructure on or about Wolfpack Way. And what that means is money. So, you know, I'm fine with this resolution, but at the end of the day, whether Wolfpack Way is technically owned by the schools now, or whether we take it over, is somewhat immaterial. Because if we say, hey, schools, you need to fix this, all they're going to do is come back and say, hey, county, we need this amount of money to fix it. So I would rather, and I don't know that we need a motion to do it, but what I'm going to do as Budget Chairman is talk to our Highway Superintendent, and I'm going to talk to our county mayor, and I'll talk to our Finance Director, and we're just going to find out a way to solve the problem. We're not going to talk about it a whole bunch, we're just going to do it. And then I'm going to put it up for our next, as part of our next budget cycle. And then, you know, then we can all fight about how much, oh, this is going to cost. And what I'm telling you is that it's going to cost money. I'm going to put something forward. If we can get money from the state, that's great, but I'm going to put something forward in budget, and I'm going to put something forward in budget during our next budget cycle. And I don't really care whose fault it was, I don't really care about passing a political football back and forth, just going to solve the problem. I just want to note that when that comes forward, and we all start squabbling about spending the money, everybody right now is saying they want this. So that's my only comment on it.
Okay. Call on Mr. Klein, and then I'm going to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate what everybody's saying about this, but having been a developer for many years, many years ago, this responsibility lays squarely on the civil engineer who designed the road. And if he did not have the expertise to understand what kind of traffic movement there was with schools, there are specialists in traffic movement that he could have and should have hired as part of his responsibility to design this school system. He's the only one I have not heard is getting involved in this. We're, I'm not a traffic specialist, and I was a builder for many years. I don't think anybody sitting here in the county commission is a traffic specialist. And I don't know that the civil engineer is a traffic specialist, but I know if he did not feel he could handle the job, then he should have hired, that should have been part of his fee, that's part of his responsibility. And they have, engineers have insurance for mistakes like this. And it's time to call him in and ask him to fix the problem, do what his license requires, and get the job done. That's where we need to be. We shouldn't be trying to fix it, the school board should not be trying to fix it, Scott Langford should not be trying to fix it. This is a very special problem that requires a set of skills that is very specified. So that's where we need to be with this. So the second part of the resolution that Mr. Jones is stating is the key to this. The engineer needs to come back in and fix the problem. Thank you.
Well, I'm not sure that I need to speak now after Mr. Klein. I felt like he would have the wisdom to solve this problem, but I wanted to say, having constructed many schools in the county, this is not the fault of the Director of Schools or the Board of Education. It does lie squarely back on the engineers. We are required to hire an engineer that will give the movement of traffic, they do a study, and they design the roads pretty much as to how they ought to operate when we build a new school. Been through that many, many times. And then the only other thing that I wanted to say, we need to be cautious about what we say we will do about these things, because I promise you that Liberty Creek is not the only school with this kind of problem. When I leave my house on Rebecca Drive, if I leave later than 2:15 to get to Merrill Hyde Magnet School, it is backed up out off the campus onto Walton Ferry Road, and you take your life in your hands by going on the other side of Walton Ferry Road to go into town in Hendersonville. So I have to, I've learned to make a big loop around that area out of my way quite a bit to get to the school. But then, once I arrive at Merrill Hyde Magnet School, because there are no buses serving that school, the traffic is backed up off the campus, which is a long area of loading. It is backed up off the campus, blocking Township Drive, going up in front of Merrill Hyde Magnet School, back to the road Shackel Island, New Shackel Island, blocking one entire lane there, going into Hendersonville. It's something that's going to happen, if we can solve it, that's great, but it's something that happens at many, many schools. So if we're going to handle this with budget, I've got a lot of suggestions for you, and you better be ready for just an outpouring of road construction and things of that sort to solve the problem.
Commissioner Teichner's on up now.
Commissioner Teichner.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Chairman Pro Tem. I appreciate everything that everybody's said, but it almost feels like that video, if anyone's ever watched that YouTube video called "The Nail." Has anyone seen that video? It'll help. Go Google it. There's a spouse that's talking to her spouse, and she says, "I've got a horrible headache, and I don't understand what I can do to fix the problem." And she's just saying, you know, "It hurts all the time, it's just like something's in my head pulsating." And he just says, "Well, honey, can we just take the nail out of your head?" And that was the whole thing. And so it's not a he said, she said. I think that if you go back and look at every single citizen who is in charge of me and this county, every citizen's comment has been the same. There's been a few that have come up about traffic patterns. That's not the issue. The actual issue is already solved if you drive out there. And I don't mean about traffic flow, because every school's going to be backed up. That's not an issue we can fix. I mean, there might be a way to engineer it out, and it's wonderful. And I love what the commissioner said over here on budget, that that's a wonderful thought and idea, and that may be a case. That's a different scenario, though. And I love what Commissioner Klein said about the engineering, because that really, it's not my, it's not my ability or job to solve that problem engineering-wise. But if you're driving, just follow with me. If you're driving up, August of 2022, I started getting tagged because I won the election. And when they voted me in, they started tagging me on Facebook, which I didn't have a Facebook account, because Facebook shut it down. But that's a whole different story. But I got access three times, and then they shut me down permanently. But, and I only said "I love Jesus," is the only thing I said negative, but apparently. But anyway, so when you come up and look, there's two lanes coming on our county road of Hunter's Lane, and they come straight up. One is a straight go-through lane that goes straight on to a non-county road that we have no jurisdiction over whatsoever, a Wolfpack Way. Okay, you follow me? One goes straight through. The second one comes up, and it is a turn lane only. And it turns a left turn that goes into the other part of Hunter's Lane. If you've not been there, it's like Tyree Springs, that goes on to New Hope, you know, it's that same kind of thing. So when you come up there, what happened? It's not about traffic flow, it's about illegal parking in that intersection. That's what the issue is. I don't want anyone to misunderstand, because I've sat in beach traffic, I've sat in station camp traffic, I've sat in Westmoreland traffic, I've sat in Hendersonville traffic, all over. But that is not the issue. The issue that is the most concerning, that we don't have an answer to, because I'm not an engineer, is the fact that there's one straight lane that goes, and there's one turn lane that goes. But here's where the problem is. If you go up that turn lane and don't turn left, immediately, once you get to the, I repeat, the non-controlled road that is not adopted by Sumner County. We do not own that road, that is owned by the Sumner County School Board. It is a school road, Wolfpack Way, not county road. When you go across onto that, it becomes a two-lane road on this side going forward, and there's one lane coming out. You understand? So there's three lanes there. And that is a wonderful situation, except when people block that road to go across. And when they block that road, it makes it where emergency vehicles can't get through. If there's an emergency at the school, God forbid, and if there's an emergency at one of those homes, God forbid, or if there's an accident, God forbid, no one can get through. It's not a traffic flow issue. That is a problem and a sore spot. But the issue is a safety issue, and that's what we all voted on unanimously, was the safety issue and the safety concern. And that's the reason we didn't give a recommendation, because that's like me going and telling my neighbors to take down their Christmas decorations. I can't tell them that, because thank God we live in a country, I can't. I don't want to have that right. And so the thing is, all we're saying is, hey, neighbors, will y'all look at it? Because our road, county road, Hunter's Lane, meets your road, Wolfpack Way. Two non, they're both government-owned, but they're not the same body. We don't have control over them. And so I say it again and again and again and again. We must find a way to say, please, school board, look at it. They're wise, they have ways to figure it out. And the citizens have begged for so long, just to get a solution. I'm not mad at anybody. The only one I'm mad at is the government for not solving their issues. So the only two things I want my government to do is keep us safe from foreign entities and to have good roads. And we sure are failing on the good roads, and we don't have a standing army in Sumner County. And so the problem is, we've got to say, please, help us, because if you help our citizens, that's all that matters anyway. The citizens want safety first, and then they want the traffic to flow well, secondly. That is the true story, and that's all they want. And because that's what they want, that is all I want.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just sum this up. The, I want to push back on a little bit of what you said, just to clarify the situation. This is very unique. It's not like other school systems. It's not just a traffic problem with the amount of traffic. In any of the other school systems, you can drive one, maybe two city blocks at the most, and make a turn and come back and get to where you were going. This is out in the country, folks. There's not city blocks out there. You're driving a long way to get around this backup. It is not easy at all to deal with. And there, one of my fellow commissioners mentioned, if there have been safety situations, and I'll repeat something that one of the citizens complained about, she couldn't leave her own driveway, because the line was in front of her driveway. And she had an emergency, I think it was her mother-in-law down the road that had an emergency, she had to get there, and she couldn't leave her driveway. She had to wait for somebody to let her out, because there was just a line of parked cars. How do you move parked cars? You've got to wait for the one in front of you to move, you know? And so nobody's going to get out of line to let her out, because they don't know what her business is, they just think she can wait. So it is a real concern. And the fact that it's only working properly when there's a sheriff deputy out there or sheriff himself enforcing that nobody gets in this spot, that's when it's working. And then when they leave, it's back to the path of least resistance, like one citizen said. But I appreciate everything that all of my fellow commissioners have said. I'm open to changes. My point of bringing this resolution tonight was to let everybody know that we can't not do anything. We've got to keep this, I don't know if it's keeping it in Highway or refer it to another committee, or come up with a joint committee between the school board and this to look at it. But there's got to be action taken on it, because this U-turn idea is a temporary fix as long as it is enforced. I encourage you to pass this resolution, or some form of it, or give direction on how we can send it back to committee with instructions on who needs to look at this. And I'm open to any of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers.
The question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Put it on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Okay, I think we've decided we've heard all we need to on this issue. So we will vote, place that on the board. We did, did we have a motion? You made the motion, was there a second?
I seconded about two hours ago, I think. No, about 30 minutes ago.
All right, motion and a second, so place that on the board, Madam Chairman.
I got lost.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Okay, that passes with 21 votes, a unanimous vote. Is that all, Mr. Chairman? All right. Next is General Operations, in which there should be no one getting in the queue, please. The attorney has said we really don't need to talk about this. All we need to do at this time is just accept the money. We'll talk about it later. All right. General Operations.
So move, second.
All right. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like saying, unanimous vote. Do you still want to? All right, go ahead and say what you...
I may make an amendment, I don't know. I have a question. What is the deadline for accepting this money? Are we on 30 days? Is it 60? Is there, do we know?
I don't even know if we ought to talk to that point here. Yeah, the attorney advisor is not getting in any discussion to take the money or give it back.
Well, I'm going to make an amendment, because from my understanding, and Mr. Law Director, correct me if I'm wrong on this, the city of Hendersonville owns 50% of the library, and Sumner County owns 50%. So I think we need to make an amendment reflecting that, you know, we accept this money with the understanding that Hendersonville is to receive half of that money, since this donation is for the Hendersonville Public Library, and we have two owners on it.
Would that be appropriate to discuss?
No, we have 100% appropriation of that, that we are also co-owned. The library board does not maintain their own funds, therefore, we administer against appropriation. The library board does not maintain their own funds, therefore we administer against appropriation.
So the answer to that is no.
If they want to, if they want, if they want to express any concerns that they have, have any questions, we can get it out in the open. And so my motion tonight is to defer this till February. If they're listening, they'll have plenty of time to show up here.
Now, folks, I'm going to, we have voted on this, but I overlooked his. I think I know what the vote will be, so I, I just will accept your, is there even a second to that?
I'll just make a comment, Mr. Chairman. This is not about what's gonna happen with the money.
Right.
It's just, just like what we did at the Brown House, the funds, it's just accept the money, that's it. It's gonna go, once that money's accepted, nobody can do anything with this money until the money's accepted.
Right.
So then it can go through the committee process and everybody can fight and debate whatever they want to do it all day long.
I don't hear a second anyway, so I think that's dead in the water and you're exact. Who did? You're withdrawing? Okay. Pardon? Okay. All right, I'm, I'm going to take a vote on this because it was my fault that I did not see his name in there. But folks, we cannot do anything about this. We need to accept this money, just as the chairman of General Operations said, and then we can do the other squabbling about it later. So I, I hope you use wisdom in voting here, if you'll place that on the board.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm gonna, I just wanna, I think I'll put this to bed, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't know if this needs to come as a, as an amendment. I understand the, I think I understand the issue here. I'm not fully abreast of it. I, I understand the issue is, okay, the City of Hendersonville, because they're still part owner, they want representation. However we choose to do it, I would just note that because I don't want to get into a squabble now over it, ultimately, this will come to, to budget. I'm happy to just state that as part of this, as part of the appropriations process, once we have it, I'm happy to appoint somebody from the City of Hendersonville to a, a subcommittee to oversee it. I'm happy to potential, to do that so that they have representation. Or we can, we can take a vote on that if we need an amendment. I, I think I can just do that myself. That way we don't have to fight over it now. I just will point out there, just to keep everybody happy, that the City of Hendersonville, if it comes to budget, which I think it has to, I'll make sure that the City of Hendersonville has representation during that process.
Yeah, well, whatever we can do or not do, I would like to express to you that we're not at that point. That, all that we're seeing will occur later. It's, it's not that Hendersonville won't get the money. And I see where Mr. Commissioner Schmidt's coming from, but it's not appropriate to discuss it at this time. Do we still have a second? All right, then we'll place that on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
All right, we're back to the main motion and Commissioner Schmidt, those kinds of things can be brought up at another time. So I see where you're coming from. Okay, we'll place this on the board, on the board. Well, yeah, let's place it on the board. Get an official vote on it.
Each commissioner records your vote.
You have to, by law, for you to do that.
It receives a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, item number two got added to the agenda. It is basically, that's about the nonprofit donation pursuant to TCA five-dash-nine-dash-one-oh-nine to five oh one C three for Westmoreland Quarterback Club to pay off debt incurred by athletic facility of two hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred seventy-two and zero eight cents in memorandum of understanding. My motion is to move this forward to the full commission in February with proper notice of the nonprofit allocation for this. We do that in a lot of different things. So that is my motion to come before this body. Again, like I said, it came before General Ops twice. I know there was comments that didn't agree with going to Gen Ops, but I mean, Gen Ops deals with buildings just more than education does. And, you know, quite frankly, this was asked of me if, if there was a way we could help. And we brought it forward as an idea to try to get it forward as something, it's solo and individual, not put in some omnibus package to hold hostage with some other athletic funding to be able to do this, just simple. I can go on and on and have plenty I can talk about for the next thirty minutes about this. But, you know, I, I don't think it's appropriate to send it to education, another committee for it to die, because that's the intent of that, in my opinion. Westmoreland has asked for this. We have a means to do it from the hospital fund. We have over a million dollars in that fund. That's where's my funding source that I've mentioned twice in Gen Ops and I've mentioned it twice in budget. I came and spoke. I do have the packet information, if anybody wants it, if we need that for tonight. But again, we're not voting to appropriate money tonight. But my motion is to move it to the full commission in February with notice from the Finance Department and the Law Office about the opportunity to do this in February for this amount. And, you know, I hear a lot about from this floor of, if we don't do this now, it's gonna be more expensive. Well, I mean, this is true. If we don't do this now, it'll be more expensive for them next month as interest rates keep compounding on this. And that is a fact. And so it is something that I, I think we can do, should do on behalf of the community. So I so move.
All right, a motion and a second to do this. Commissioner Sho.
I apologize.
Let's limit our debate.
Apologize here, but I'm just gonna paraphrase Mr. Duffer, who spoke very eloquently earlier. When he stated that he oversees many, many programs and that he could not disperse to just one program, he had to fairly distribute. We are in the same situation here overseeing all the different schools for the county. And so if we were to choose just this now, it, it, we are biasing ourselves toward just the first mover. There's millions of dollars of notes taken out by private entities for different facilities throughout the county. And I'm not necessarily saying I'm against this, by the way. I may very well be for it. I just want to consider it, and this is what I said in budget and this is what I'm gonna say now. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against putting it on there, but I want the folks in the audience to know here that not necessarily against it, I'm just adhering to, to Mr. Duffer's sentiment, which is eloquent speaker, that we are in the position where we have to fairly, give everybody a fair shot at the table for dispersing the funds if they're, if they're available. So I'm gonna be against this, but I do intend to, to consider it earnestly as part of our next fiscal year. And it's, I do, it's not there to just die. I want to make it part of an overall comprehensive kind of look at the countywide. Thank you.
Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I did find this a little odd that it did go through General Ops. So I know our General Ops chairman said, well, it's a facility or it's a building, but there's a difference there. It's a good distinction. There's a difference in what a county-controlled asset, which would go through general operations versus a school asset, which is controlled and managed by the School Board. So just wanted to point that out. But there's also something else that I, I want to just say here is fair and equitable distribution, I think, with some of the terminology that was put out there as far as like, well, you know, Westmoreland doesn't get as much as other, other places. Well, there's another school too that has WHS in, in their initials, it's White House High School. Their booster clubs also, I think, fall in that, that bucket. You know, so if, if, if we're raising our hands and saying, hey, our boosters need money, you know, I'm, I'm not wholly against helping folks out if we have the money. And apparently the hospital fund's got a million dollars that we can just dole out. So I want to offer an amendment to this and just include White House High School boosters for the same amount as Westmoreland. And I so move.
So your amendment is that we will have a hearing on both?
Correct, yes, sir.
Or a notice on both for the next meeting? All right, motion, is there a second? Anyone wishing to speak to this particular amendment?
I will. We received an email from the Director of Schools this weekend that said that there's only four high schools that have quarterback club debt. White House High School is not one of them. It was Hendersonville, Beach, Station Camp, and Westmoreland. The county has said yes to Beach High School's request for nine point one million dollars for their booster clubs when they came here in 2023. The county has said yes to Hendersonville High School's request for now nine million dollars total when they came here on behalf of their booster clubs, most recently four hundred eighty thousand dollars for their baseball facility. And as of August 2024, their baseball booster club was trying to raise funds for this facility, almost half a million dollars. And the School Board just stepped in November, the Director of Schools, we're just gonna pay that for you so you don't have to take out a loan. They were planning on doing exactly what Westmoreland did, but now they don't have to. So you've got, the county said yes to Beach for nine point one million dollars, Hendersonville for nine million dollars. They also said yes to Station Camp for over two million dollars for a track and a future obligation for a football irrigation system. And all I, I'm asking on behalf of Westmoreland is just two hundred seventy-four thousand dollars for their actual debt for facility. Because what they could have done in 2021 or 2020, when this, this facility that Principal Duffer was talking about, they could have let it fall down, they could have let kids be injured or get sick from mold and mildew. They could have let that happen. And then when the Beach bleacher fiasco happened, they could have come down here and, and demanded everything like everybody else did and said, do you hate kids if you don't vote for this? And they could have gotten millions of dollars at that time, but they didn't. They were, as Principal Duffer did say, they were being fiscally responsible and trying to solve a problem with what they could. Two hundred thousand dollars they took from the capital allocations that were given by the School Board to all schools equally, the same amount every year. They just took some of theirs and saved it back because, and I will say about those capital allocation funds, they were not all discretionary dollars that could be used for whatever each principal they wanted to do. There were some, much of it was earmarked for certain things that they actually had to spend it on. So it wasn't just they could use it how they saw fit. It had to be, there were certain parameters put on that, those allocations. But Westmoreland, if, if they just basically, they took this upon themselves, the community raised four hundred thousand dollars. They built their bleachers themselves, they built their concession stands themselves, their locker room and their, their weight room. And they did this all themselves to try to be as fiscally responsible as they could. And I just find it silly that, that if, if we're gonna talk about quarterback clubs, I can easily say no to Beach and Hendersonville and Station Camp if they come asking. And my answer is, I'd be absolutely no, because we've already done this. But Westmoreland's not asking for anything else. They, they're not asking for all this stuff. They're not demanding it. They're just, it was a request, can you help us out so we can use this for jerseys or whatever? And I think we have an opportunity to do it. The County Commission's done it before. The School Board Director has said that the previous and current, that the School Board can't do this. Only the County Commission can do this for them. And I think there's an opportunity to do it. There are only four high schools that are, are not a part of that. So I couldn't vote for this amendment for White House because they're not, according to the Director of Schools, there's no debt for their facility. If we want to come back later for that, I'm all happy to do it, but I won't vote for that tonight. Again, it's conflated the issue. It's about Westmoreland. It's no secret, I've been talking about this for two months in two different committees. I disagree with the comments about that. I mean, by, by right, anybody can bring up something from the full of the commission, don't have to go through a committee. Thirteen votes, it's on the agenda. And that's just state law. So at the end of the day, we need to, I think we need to do this for the, the folks of Westmoreland. And I think it's the right thing to do and we have an opportunity to do it. So I'm not gonna, against if White House did have debt, but I can't vote for that amendment tonight without seeing something. Because when the Director of Schools says they don't have it, why give them the money? So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else choosing to speak to this amendment? Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, so yeah, on this amendment, during the Budget Committee, I, I voted along with Chairman, Budget Chairman Sho to essentially, you know, or move this into our normal budget cycle, which is gonna start in March anyway. But at the same time, you know, get an understanding, a better understanding of what other debt is out there. And football's not the only sport that our high schools participate in. So White House, I don't know if White House High School has, if any of their booster clubs have any debt. Because no one's giving me that information. Maybe they don't, that'd be perfect. I know I sit on the, the board at Hendersonville High School Soccer Foundation. And I know the Soccer Booster Foundation has debt. I know the football, previous commissioner mentioned the football club does as well. But so this isn't just isolated, just a football. And so my strong opinion is, let's get a list, what all is out there. And, you know, like Principal, you know, Mr. Duffer said, let's, let's be leaders and look what's all out there and make the decision versus just picking one and going with it. So I, I'll be against adding White House because I think we should add all, all the high schools.
Commissioner Harrison, are you speaking on the main, wanting to speak on the main motion or the amendment?
Main.
All right, Commissioner Schmidt, which?
So if, if this amendment is approved tonight, I guess, you know, I'd like to direct this to the Budget Chair too. And I think I know the answer, but just to get on the record and based on what I'm hearing from my fellow commissioner across there, would it be easier for you just to wait till you start your fiscal? Like I said, I think I know the answer, but I just want for the people that maybe don't understand this. Because I've sat on the committee with you for two years and it's not, no easy task. But would it be easy for you and the Budget Committee to take Westmoreland and White House and others into consideration during the fiscal year budget rather than having a deal with this next month? Because it's a quick turnaround. I'm with you on that, on Commissioner Nguyen, when he brings up his school. You know what? We all represent a district. We're all gonna fight for our district. I just got done fighting for the city I love and live in, for the library, and been fighting that for other things. So I want to extend the same courteous to him. I think White House needs to be considered. And anybody that has any questions, this will give them time and give the Budget Committee time to review everything. I've had a few School Board members agree that they would like to have that opportunity as well to maybe speak for their constituents on the schools that they represent. So I will be against adding this to February, but with the understanding that the Budget Committee has all intentions of taking this up with Westmoreland in the fiscal year budget.
Commissioner Nguyen, is this the main motion or the amendment?
I'll speak to the amendment.
Pardon?
I'll speak to the amendment. Yep. Yeah, so thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the answer to the, the question on, on White House's boosters and debt is, it's, they don't have any. Because we want to talk about fiscal conservatism, the cash flow. They get out and bootstrap, fundraise, prioritize projects, identify the things that need to be done, and then they just take care of it within the community. And so they haven't purposely borrowed money for that very reason is because it's, it's not, I would say, in the, the spirit of being a fiscal conservative, borrowing money and expecting somebody else to pay back is probably not gonna fall in that category. Now, I, I'm not wholly opposed to, to, again, helping the schools out. You know, there's an opportunity here apparently to, to skip over the Budget Committee, so why not? Let's get some, get some money from White House. You know, it, two hundred seventy-four thousand dollars, they need some facility upgrades. You know, there, there's, their facilities need to be upgraded, they need, there's lighting that needs to be upgraded. There's, there's other things that their baseball field need to be upgraded. There are safety concerns. But they haven't raised those to anybody because they're prioritizing and working them through the best that they can and what they can pay for. But if we're gonna help other folks out, I think we need to help everybody out. And so, you know, would love it if we can get this done tonight. But I mean, quite honestly, I think we should all go through the Budget Committee and all schools should be considered equally. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rogers, is this on the amendment or the main motion?
It's on the amendment, sir.
All right.
So the Speaker made mention that some clubs came down and whined and cried about having debt alleviated. And I, I just want to make sure that we understand that Portland, right next door to Westmoreland there on top of the ridge, is not always well-fed either. In fact, our Portageons last year was overflowing and, and quite nasty. And we was asking senior citizens and veterans to walk down a mud hill to school building there so they could use the restroom and then maybe they could dredge their way back up before the, the football game was over while their loved ones was playing game out on the field. So I just don't want people to get the impression that we came down and begged and pleaded for money. We did it with stakeholders from the community. However, I will be asking for all five oh one C threes of Portland's related to education to compile a list and I'll be able to present that next month as well.
Right. Commissioner Sullivan, is this on the amendment or the main motion?
On the amendment.
Okay.
Of course, I will be voting for this for next month, but I, I would love to see a, a list of what our schools of five oh one three Cs owe. but I I would love to see a a list of what our schools of 501(c)(3)O and have that list. I know Dr. Langford has provided that, but I I will, I will tell my fellow commissioners, when I was a principal, 18 years in this county, I was, I was, I went up to Westmoreland for two or three months to finish out the school year. But I've been at a principal of of Walton Ferry Elementary in Hendersonville, uh, assistant at Guild Elementary, Union STEM in Gallatin. There is definitely a difference, in my opinion, of what citizens get for their children in the schools based on where you live. Uh, well, you said it as well. So it and and that's nothing against this director's schools or former director's schools or anyone, that's just the way it is. The squeaky wheel gets the oil. So I I hope that we'll step up and do what we need to do for Westmoreland uh and do that sooner rather than later. I would love to see it go through the budget committee as far as, you know, what these 501(c)(3), uh, 501(c)(3)O. Um, but I I do think we need to step up and take care of this. I would love to see the paperwork, make sure everything's in order, of course, uh, before we do that. But I I would love to see it be attended to this this budget year.
Commissioner Wright, is this on the main motion or the amendment?
Amendment.
All right.
I agree with my fellow commissioner from Portland. The schools on the north end of the county sometimes are forgotten. This room was full tonight. The folks from Westmoreland. A year ago October, it was full, the folks from Hendersonville and Beach. And uh, you know, I asked them, come north. You know, there's a few roads that head north, folks. Not all of them head south. Take a right sometime, come visit us. I invited everybody to the Fall Festival at my school, I didn't see a single person, not one. Well, I apologize, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brown. Come visit us sometime, see our problems. I brought up an issue that I had a couple of years ago. It's being resolved finally. We had raw sewage backing up at the fill house, the old one in Westmoreland. Those young men were having to mop up crap out of the floor for ball games. Now, I, and same way in Portland, you know. If that happened at Beach, if that happened at Hendersonville, Station Camp, one one issue, it wouldn't happen because they wouldn't allow it to happen. Folks, I told you all a couple of years ago, we're getting sick and tired of being forgotten. We're up there. I'm a voice along with other commissioners in here on the north end of this county for our constituents. I laid my neck on the line a couple of years ago, ladies and gentlemen. I stuck it way out there. I'm getting close to retirement. It's a few years off, but I'll stick my neck out again if need be. Don't forget us on the north end of the county, we're not asking for a whole lot. We're not asking for nine million, eight million, total of 24 million, we're not asking for that. What we're asking for is a pittance compared to that. Thank you.
We we will be prepared now to vote on the amendment. Pardon? The amendment was to add White House uh as part of the notice.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to um make a couple of comments, um, since I was referenced. Um, I did not talk about um schools coming here and demanding that their debt be paid off, facilities be built, which is future forward facing, not not rear. Um, and it was mentioned about representation, you know, as far as representation, Westmoreland has one commissioner, just one. Portland has four, White House has two, Millersville has one, Goodlessville has two, Gallatin has eight commissioners, and Hendersonville has nine commissioners. So we're talking about representation. Beach in Hendersonville, Beach got nine million, Hendersonville got nine million, those are both Hendersonville schools. Gallatin got 3.1 million so far, Portland High School, 2.6 million they got, and Portland came down here too in 2023. Station Camp, $2 million, Merrill Hyde Magnet School, $820,000. White House, zero. Westmoreland, zero. But we're talk, what we're talking about here is, we're not talking about athletic debt, we're not talking about debt for all these other 41(c)(3). We're talking about a facility debt for a specific purpose, commensurate and equal to all the other facility money. $26 million, over $26 million has been allocated so far for these projects. Press boxes, concessions buildings, bathrooms, training rooms, locker rooms, offices, that's at Henderson Beach, same thing as Hendersonville. Gallatin press box, 1,000 seat stadium, Portland High School, home side football stadium, Station Camp, the new track, tennis courts at Merrill Hyde, $26 million so far. And we're talking about a building for a need to help a community in a way that they stepped up to try to do it responsibly and financially as best as they could to take care of a problem of raw sewage and mold and mildew. Um, and so I think it's the right thing to do. Um, this has been asked specifically for Westmoreland. Um, I think it's right to just move forward with this alone at this time. Um, so again, that is my request.
All right, and I would, um, folks, we were at a point ready, ready to vote, and now we have four more people in the queue. Let let me just say, I, there comes a point, I think, when people are ready to vote, that they they've read the message, they they know what they want to do. So let's be considerate of that, but Commissioner Lambeth, is this on the amendment? Call the question, all right, motion and a second to call the question, uh, let's put that on the board.
Each commissioner records her vote.
All right, with 17 votes, we uh will cease uh debate on that amendment and place that on the board for a vote. Just to whether White House will be added.
Each commissioner records her vote.
White House will not be added, and there's only one other person uh that we didn't hear on that first round, and that was Commissioner Harrison who wanted to speak to the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm in agreement with a lot of the points that have been made. All this is gonna do though is open the floodgates. It's 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 coming. I'm not against spending this money for Westmoreland. My dad's a Westmoreland High School graduate, I've got family that attends school up there. But remember, this this facility has already been built, we're not building this. They've already getting uh use of it. Um, I would like to know, because the facility has already been built, so we can't argue that the kids are getting benefit from this resolution. So who's getting the benefit? I'm curious about that. Because all you're really doing, yes, I get it, you're relieving guarantees, but who's the guarantors? I think that's, there's something that's being left out, that's what my gut tells me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Teichner.
Yes, sir, I won't rehash, but uh I just, I gotta say, I, my kiddos, one just graduated and and my daughter, uh, they both went to and go to Liberty Creek. And um just to rehash one quick point of the reason why that I supported and we all supported pretty much the uh, the original ask of the 15 some odd million in the original time after the bleachers fell down was to meet a need. And I do believe that all schools have needs, and I believe that all schools matter a lot in this county, I mean, equally. Uh, because there's not one child more important than the other, I don't think anybody believes that at all in, on this commissioner out there in the crowd. But the issue is that the need we see right now is is before us. And if there is a way to consider it, we'll consider that next month, if that is the commission's will. But I I'm, I'm in agreement with pretty much all the comments that have been made. I don't think that, I don't think anybody is not, and and I think, I mean, I walked in the, in the mess uh at both schools that uh that have, that, yeah, I was up at Portland especially and walking through there, and that's a wonderful school, but they they had a lot of issues going on, uh, you know, with with backed up septic, I get it. But we're not talking about Portland, we're not talking about Liberty Creek, we're not talking about uh a- any school, we're not talking about White House. I I agree with all that, and we need to address all those things eventually because that's the people's will and the people's money. But the immediate concern that's been brought before me for my vote tonight is to ask if we can consider and put on the agenda for next month and discuss it properly um about whether or not we can, we can take care of this debt that is paid for uh by by the community, the ones who did sign it. I don't know who signed it, uh, I don't have anybody going to Westmoreland, but they're still my people. It doesn't matter that it's not my district. And so I think that in a way, they got 24 commissioners that represent them, just like Hendersonville has 24 that represent them. And so I just think that's just really important. And I I I actually ask that we all continue to look at it the same way that we've been doing because we don't need to forget about schools, we don't need to hold grudges. Now that we just got to figure out, if there's a way to bring the people's money to the people, whatever that looks like, we need to do that in the most con, most conservative fiscal way possible and be honest. And so I I appreciate uh that this is coming up, and I just want to say that that's the reason why I'm not bringing up the schools that I represent because there have been some monies that have been given to them, and they probably need more, there there may be. But the thing is, is right now the need before us is Westmoreland, I just want to remind everybody, appreciate y'all.
Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, so when we, when the all the bleachers collapsed and we were all talking about, you know, the requests from schools about money and so forth, the vast majority of commissioners were adamant, including myself, about, we want to see a li, we want to see a list of everything we're talking about here so that we can make an educated decision of whether we want to supply, provide the money or not. Right? I I'm, it's confusing, it's confusing to me why some commissioners, they don't, they don't, in this case now, they don't want to see a list. They only want this to to talk about one item. To me, it's it's the exact same thing, but where we were adamant about it, now we 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 don't, we don't care about it, type of thing. So I I just, I don't understand why, I I haven't heard anybody said that they're against giving this money to Westmoreland. The only thing I I have heard is, hey, let's run it through the budget cycle, let's also see what is the full list, not just football related, and and just see what we're working with. And then if we want to drain the entire hospital fund, let's do it, we had that decision. But I don't even know what, I don't, I don't, I don't know what the list is. So I I, again, it just, it it just is odd to me that at this point in time, people, some of us don't care about the list, so thank you.
Commissioner Lambeth. Call the question. Motion and second, I'll, uh, we will place it on the board, I think. Well, we'll continue talking about this, uh, we have one other person in the queue, Commissioner, now we have two, Commissioner Janon.
Thank you. Um, a couple of years ago, when all of this started with the schools and the facilities and all that, I did a little research and went to all the schools and took pictures and looked at everything. And when I was at Westmoreland, um, I talked to some of the citizens there that were outside, they were in the uh bleachers taking pic, seeing your pictures and such. And I talked to them about, you know, what exactly do you think about what's going on with all of the situation with the bleachers and what all they're wanting and things? And I said, is there something you need? And they said, well, we don't need bleachers, we're happy with our bleachers. But they told me about their facility house, that how they had to go about building it and who helped do it. And as we argue about, you know, we might make sure, I don't mind a list. I know that we had asked the the um, Mr. Langford to give us a list, and I don't know why he didn't have it on the list, but I have talked to a principal or two, and Mr. uh Langford, sometimes uh, they don't always have the ability to do what they actually want to do. So when I was talking to them about the building, they told me how they had done it and who helped, and um the people in the community came together because it was so horrible. It was horrible for what they told me. And in my opinion, the school at the time, during that time, and the county failed them. They failed that community for not helping them build that facility. They should have known what was going on, like a lot of other things that go on that are not fixed. So when we argue about giving the school this money to help and reimburse them for a problem that was going on in that community at a time when they needed to take care of their children and their, the health, one of the health risks, we, you know, I want to say this nicely because I sometimes tend to cuss. So what I'd like to say is that I get that we all want to help everybody because we all have a district that we look at, I personally am in Gallatin. But what I have witnessed here is that we do things, we argue about things because we want to make, we want a list, we want this. But we forget that these people did this to help take care of an issue. They had to take out a loan, and don't forget that every month, because I have a house payment, I have to pay interest on that loan. And I can tell you that my loan, I pay $17,000 a year in interest on my house loan. And it's pretty darn close to what they have, they have on that building up there. That's $17,000 they could be using on something else. So do we ignore, as Ms., this commissioner says about the north part of the county? We have ignored it, I've witnessed it, I saw it even when I wasn't a commissioner. They they have ignored Portland. But it's the school system. So why can't this county commission take it upon ourselves to pull in our pride and say, you know what, we need to help these people? For once, do something without pride in your head and in your mind and do something to help these people to take care of something that is just minor compared to what we just went through last year to build these monstrosity bil, facilities for sports. I'm all, four people have the nice places to play football and soccer and all those other things. But this is a minor thing where we need to stop and get rid of your pride and say, you know what, you're right, you're right. We have a place in our county, in the north, in the north, that did something to help their kids, and now they're just asking for some relief, and that's it, that's all. That's all. And then like they said, they want to have a list. Will they get a list? But this is different. They didn't come running down here asking for that last fall. I didn't hear them come and ask them for that, none of it. They're, they're, they're good people, they're not going to do that. So my point is, is this is baloney. This is just baloney, all this shenanigans we're doing here. We're taking a lot of time, we're talking about all this stuff and I get, everybody wants to say something. But it's not right for us to ignore an issue that happened before we got, before I got here. And these, and these people did what was right and they took care of it and I think we should help them. And that's what I'm going to say about it and I'm going to vote for it because I think they deserve it and that's all I got to say.
Commissioner Brown.
A year and a half ago, we had a fifteen point eight million dollar ask for five different schools from multiple facilities. Then it got pared down to three schools with an additional five million plus ask for these Director Langford sold us a bird in the bush. Now, we've got a bird in the hand over here. This facility's already built. It's debt that we know is not going to move. Because again, three point one seven million of that money that we gave to the school system, it's already been spent on other things other than the school, the, those bleachers, track, whatever. And I think that this is something that they deserve. This, this is a small amount compared to what, you know, we had the whole beach community, Gallatin, everything else arrayed against us. We need to do something for this, which we know is one debt and let it go with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, th- this is just a, a comment because, I guess there's a couple of years, I guess it was a year ago, or when we were talking about all the, the bleacher stuff, I went back and researched and it was, I believe in two thousand and eleven, I was trying to see if it coincided with Station Camp. I'm, I'm not sure because I don't know the history, but you know, Station Camp opened up two thousand and two-ish and I think probably the same, maybe it taken a little bit longer just because we had bleachers falling down this time, may have taken a little bit longer back then for it to get to the point we're at now. Because in two thousand and eleven, I believe, the county commission went through this exact same exercise and paid off the debt of all the booster clubs throughout the county. So we just got there a little sooner because of the bleachers. But Liberty Creek started all this, right? Um, so that's something for future commissions down the road is whenever you open a new school, just, just know that this is going to follow shortly behind it, right? But again, I'm going back to, I just, let's, let's look at it all, see, see if we can cover it all. Let's, I, I'll just cover it all. And I'm not opposed of putting Westmoreland, you know, prioritizing, but, but I can't, without knowing what, where, what all is out there, it, it, I think it's just short-sighted by all of us, so thanks.
Commissioner, well, but, uh, Commissioner Tishner, were you wanting to say something?
I was, but I just, I'm trying to just be as, as, um, you know, understanding of the time of the people.
I, I appreciate that.
I'm, I'm going to answer some questions that are asked. One question was asked, like, who benefits from paying this off? Somebody in County School Board does because they own this building. These citizens don't own it.
Okay. All right. Uh, I'm going to ask that the clerk place on the board, uh, the adding of Westmoreland onto the agenda next, uh, week.
With the notification.
Uh.
It's with notification for nonprofit allocation.
With notification, yes.
In the news.
Uh, so, Madam Clerk, are you ready?
Each commissioner record your vote.
This was not, I want everyone to understand what we have voted on. This is not approval, this is notification that this will be on the agenda for next month. All right. And that was approved, fifteen affirmative votes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We will take ten minutes before we get into committee on committees. All right, committee on committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, item number one on committee on committees is library board, uh, Mike Ray, Gallatin, a two-year term, and Eric Stockton from Gallatin, a two-year term. Like, if you make a motion to group and approve?
All right, motion and a second. We, uh, we'll take a voice vote and see how that works out. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light signs.
No.
All right, we'll place that on the board.
Are we not allowed to discuss?
Pardon?
I'm in two years.
Oh, all right. Go ahead, Mr. Becker.
So who would approve it?
Yeah, so, my understanding, the motion was to group and approve the two candidates,
so able to discuss that.
So, uh, it, was this one candidate or both?
Group and approve both, yes.
Both, okay.
Okay. Appreciate that clarification.
All right, so we'll put that.
But that's, but no, no, that's, I don't want to talk now, thank you. Um, so, couple, couple of things I just wanted to point out. The, jot it down on some notes, I looked at, I pulled up the library boards, you know, bylaws, um, to the comment that one of the speakers made earlier about, you know, not being qualified, that, I don't know if multiple people said it, I definitely said it, um, back in the last time around. The, the library board is, there's four different committees. There's a, a budget and finance, a building of facilities, a personnel, and bylaws and policy review. So that, that's the, that's the four committees and, and of course, when you, when you break down committees, you put committee members and you're looking at what type of people you want in, in certain roles and for certain competing committees, it's, it's more than just, you know, living here for, living in the county, right? The, the bylaws may only state living in the county. I know the state library committee recommends strongly that someone with HR background, um, is involved on the board. Uh, when you're looking at, um, like I'm on the, I mentioned earlier, I'm on a HHS soccer board and this, 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 bear with me here, we have committees, when we, I mean, technically any parent of a soccer player can be on our board, but knowing that we need someone with, you know, technical ability for the website, social medias, et cetera, we need someone with fundraising background, experiences because, you know, we're there to main- mainly to fundraise and so forth. And so, yes, anybody at the school could be on, on the board, but, but to me, there's some requirements that help qualify someone over someone else. Even our committees here, um, I think Commissioner Klein does a, is, is wisdom and experience is on, you know, general ops, for example. Um, his background, his work, et cetera, is, is valuable, but there's no requirement for it, there's no stated requirement. You know, we got highway, or the health and emergency services, sometimes, you know, if someone's in law enforcement or sheriffs and so forth, maybe they would serve on that. So again, it's not required, so having wisdom, having those experiences, having those backgrounds, they're not required, but they are extremely beneficial to the committee, to the board and so forth. So, so yeah, so when I look, when I look at the library board, uh, same type of concept, there may be some things that, that aren't necessarily required, but in my opinion, are they the most qualified? No, they're not, right? So, uh, I just wanted to clarify that. Again, I may not have been the only one, but I know I didn't mention that. But, but it's important to me that it's not just someone living in, in the county. Do they believe in God? Yes, I, I, I want that to be a requirement. It's not listed on the bylaws that I saw, but I would want that to believe, because I don't want filth in any library. So if there's a, if there's a person of, up for a nominee that's up that, that isn't against, make sure I say that right, you know, if they're okay with filth, I would not think they would be qualified, even though on paper, they're qualified. So, you know, let's, let's make sure we understand that the qualifications aren't always just black and white. Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. November the eighteenth, for Mr. Stockton, most of us, I knew I did, received forty-seven emails, uh, in their affirmative and, and four against him. All those who were for him were conservative Republicans, four were pastors and one was a local children's author. Uh, of the four, all were liberal Democrats, progressives, voting record. January twenty-seventh, for today, um, by my count, uh, from my emails, I've received a hundred and fourteen emails for Mr. Stockton and Mr. Ray in the affirmative and only twenty-five against. And of all the, all those for him, conservative, Christian, Republicans, all but one that I could find of the twenty-five against him were, were liberal progressive Democrats. Seven of that wrote in were pastors of churches, seven. One was actually Riley Gaines, Station Camp High School, nationally syndicated speaker now, uh, very popular on Fox News, um, has the ear of President Trump, came and spoke and read a children's book at our Hendersonville Library. And, you know, you, that, that's, has a lot of weight. And when you want to talk about a majority and listening to the citizens' voices, hundred and fourteen to twenty-five, forty-seven to four, of people in Sumter County saying, these people represent our values. We have had an election in this nation on values and this nation has flatly rejected the insanity of leftism, of saying there's more than two genders. President Trump has in a, a executive order saying only two genders in the federal government. Our libraries don't say that, taxpayer-funded. So people are tired of the insanity, let's talk about qualifications. Um, you know, Commissioner Hinton, when I first got elected in eighteen, he told me, he said, you know what, Commissioner Mansfield? He said, you can get anybody elected as a commissioner, you can get a prisoner elected, all you need is- all you need is enough votes, you know, you can get anybody on a board with enough votes, take thirteen votes." When talking about qualifications, my constituent friend, Pete Hexeth, said he was unqualified to be Secretary of Defense, unqualified. But you know why he was unqualified for the leftist? Because he was not woke, he was a warfighter. These men are qualified, according to our citizens, our constituents, these people who wrote in, because they're warfighters and they're not woke. People are tired of it. I shared last week, last time, two months ago, a quote from the old issue of the Sumner County News, copied in a short history of Sumner County, seventeen eighty-six to nineteen fifty-seven. It states, "Certainly there's no better gauge of a community's sense of values in both intellect and spirit than to gauge its library offers." So I ask, as a reflection of Sumner County's community standards and values, what do a majority of sitters, citizens consider these values to be? Is it a pride tree, teaching sexual, sex to kids, sexuality in libraries? No. Is it when, men who dress up as women use the public restroom in public libraries in Sumner County? Does that represent our values? No, and it happens, it's happened in a Sumner County library. Librarian reached out to me about it, complained about it, tendered her resignation, and was removed earlier than her resignation, tender, tender, being tendered over a man, an address going into a women's la, restroom in a Sumner County public library. Does that represent our values? No. Do potential drag queen story hour events at public libraries represent Sumner County's values? No, they do not. Do men who dress up as women as drag queens and dance in front of children and throw money at them like happens at churches here in Sumner County? Does that represent Sumner County's values? No. But the groups who complain about these candidates not being qualified are the same groups who approve of women, men dressing up as women and dancing in front of small children for dollars being thrown at them. These are, these are those people who, who complain about these, these processes or who's qualified. But the qualification is, these are people who are passionate about their community, they live here, they work here, they worship here, they play here, they teach here, they educate their kids here. These are people in our community who have been, are representational of a majority of Sumner County's values. This is not California. If you want crazy, go to California, not Sumner County. Life isn't fair. Hundred fourteen people for these two men, twenty-five against them. There should be thirteen or more votes for these guys today. Call it a day, get the insanity out of our libraries. There's nothing wrong with policies, there's, what's wrong is anybody who tries to compare protecting kids from graphic explicit sexual reading materials to their First Amendment privileges, that they have a right to, as an adult, to have that, well, it's a public library, it's taxpayer dollars, you don't have that right, in my opinion. It's my dollars, I don't want that used for that stuff, for minors. Adult, you can do, put an adult section, put it in a private bookstore, put it, you can put an adult section. But we're talking about protecting kids from minors, there's been all this, this stuff, and the people who say the most awful, just vile, defamatory things about conservative Christian people who want to protect kids has been unconscionable. The stuff that we get in our inboxes, the stuff that's said on social media, it's shameful. This, this, this is not Los Angeles County, or Davidson County, or Shelby County, or Hamilton County, or Knox County, it feels like it lately, but I, I just think it's ridiculous that we're even having these conversations, but people are tired of the insanity, they're tired of the, the crazy, they're tired of the woke, they want warfighters who are, are men and women who are going to stand and protect our kids, and stand before God one day and say that they did their best to protect kids from the unconscionable. I had a girl tell me when she was a teen, thirteen years old, checked out in one of our public libraries, accidentally a book, and what she was exposed to, that seemed innocent, innocuous, what she was exposed to in that book traumatized her, went and told her parents, went and had to get pastoral counseling because of the sexually graphic explicit stuff in a book targeted towards children that was not age-appropriate and suitable in a public library. That's the kind of crap we were trying to get out of our libraries, shouldn't be there, public or pri, or, or scho, uh, a public library or a school library, it shouldn't be available to minors, period, especially with my tax dollars, my constituents' tax dollars. These people's tax dollars who wrote in and expressed, one hundred and fourteen of them, seven being pastors, one being Riley Gaines, who stands against all this woke culture crap, and then twenty-five people complained, all of them being woke liberals who just were rejected on a national level with all those policies and insanity. So, I'm asking you guys to vote for these guys tonight, this will, I think, if I'm not mistaken, fill out the library board and be done with this, and so we have to quit doing this every month, put whoever you want to on that next year when people come up. But I, I'm in favor of this, and I think we need to vote, vote this through. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Teichner.
Mr. Chairman, I'll keep it short, sweet. We have an opportunity to be representatives of the people. If we wonder how the people feel, because there's always the question, how do the people feel? We just had an election, like, two months ago, and President Trump won by about seventy percent in this county. We just had a commissioner say that he wants them to have a belief in God. I want them to have a belief in Jesus, but the thing is, is we have an opportunity to actually vote the will of the people or not. Because those two men came up, and the only two things I heard them, only one thing I heard them say, the one clear point is that they would stand in the way of any agenda that was not about just reading books. They're just going to stand in the way of the things that President Trump got elected on by the people of Sumner County, whom we represent. I love every one of y'all, but we shouldn't have one negative vote against these two men. And I heard them, families came and spoke, we have heard countless people, and also, the good commissioner beside me was speaking, but there were, there were countless deacons, there's countless people I go to coffee with, all these people that, they've never emailed me in their life, and they said, "Please, vote these two men in," it's all they want. So, it's a no br, it literally, the writings on the wall, the writings on the ballot two months ago, and we must represent the people, or we must all get out of the way and let some of them serve. That's all I'm saying, myself included, if I don't represent them.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to respectfully ask both candidates tonight that have stepped forward, I want to respectfully ask them to please listen to the city of Hendersonville and my constituents. If, if they get the thirteen votes, and I don't know if they are tonight, but let's, if they do, and I'll be happy if they are elected to the school board, to the library board, pardon, or if they're not and they still want this information, I'll be willing to email them the information that was shared to me about last summer when I visited the Hendersonville Public Library with the library director. I will respectfully say this, I'm not trying to get ugly here, but citizens, city, some city leaders have felt ignored by the current director there. They've sent emails and they've received no response. They want more hours. Hendersonville Public Library needs more hours, and I've gone on the record and had it back and forth with another commissioner with some points. Sixty hours is a big ask, but I think we need to incrementally bring it from forty to forty-four, and so on and so forth. Some statistics that she shared with me was astonishing to me, because in this day and age, I didn't, I honestly didn't think these numbers would be this high, but total, and I'll get through this quick, I promise, total checkouts for the year of twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four was two hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-two. That's a big number. This is Henderson, this is just Hendersonville. New borrowers added for that year, again, just for Hendersonville, was over six thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven. Children, we talk about the kids, yeah, I want the kids to have age-appropriate material, I don't want bad things in their hands, but here's another thing, children's storytime totals, eighty-six, eighty-five. So I'm going to respectfully ask if these two gentlemen are appointed tonight to please, let's, I want to bring these numbers up, and how do we do that? We need to increase the hours. I understand that one of them, well, both of them have financial backgrounds, one owning a business and one in the other stuff he does, I, I think there's a way to figure this out, to increase the hours for these citizens. They've been crying over this for ten years. Yeah, I met with the director, she took me on a tour back in July of twenty twenty-four, said she could add four hours a week without any new money. Now, I'm not going to hold her to, to her, to that today, because I understand things may have changed since July of twenty twenty-four, or maybe she just misspoke. So to give her the benefit of the doubt, maybe they cannot do that, but if they can, they need to start looking at that. The citizens of Hendersonville also have, you know, suggested Fri, opening on Fridays, and I'm sorry to bring- But, all right, I'm, I'm about to wrap this up, because this is going to have a lot to, to steer me where I'm voting tonight. But the citizens have spoken, they want Friday opening, they want to, my whole point is here, is I hope the two candidates, and I feel like they are, I'm not saying they aren't, I hope they're listening tonight. People want to read more. When I say people, kids. I have people that I represent in my district that don't have the money to spend on internet, so they rely on the library for that. So I want to see, I'll wrap this up, I want to see increased hours. And just one quick note, you know, a lot of us here have pressed the yellow button, which is the abstain button, because we feel like we didn't have enough information. I feel like I have enough information based on a lot of time that I've taken to listen to every, all the stakeholders involved with this to make a decision tonight. But I would like to respectfully say we vote on one, one candidate at a time. Thank you.
Commissioner Wynn.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question, I'll direct it to you, Mr. Chairman, and, and, you know, if you can direct it to the Committee on Committees Chairman, that would be great. But has there been a skills assessment with our current library board versus the needs of our library system? Has that ever been done?
To my knowledge, not, but it may have been.
Okay, yeah, so the reason why I ask is I'm just trying to understand, what is it that, that we're, we're trying to, to fill? So, there's obviously some, a skill set, or there's needs that, that somebody's identified somewhere that they're saying that, hey, we've got these two great candidates, and, and, you know, these are the people to, to fill these roles and to serve in the library. So, like, the, the best I can tell, there are at least six of the nine current members of the library board that have a strong passion for protecting our, our children, and that's a strong majority already on the library board, and have been that way, starting in twenty twenty-three. And so a lot of these issues that we hear today, we've got the right people, I suppose, in place, that, that came to us and said the exact same thing whenever they were appointed, is that, you know, hey, we got to protect our children, we got to get the, the garbage out of our library, you know, I know they've enacted policy, but we still hear the exact same reason for needing to appoint more people, so I'm, that's a little concerning to me that we can't seem to solve that issue, and, and I don't know why. Is it we don't have the right people, we're not selecting the right people? Is it that the, the problem's just too big, that it can't be solved? Or is it a skills issue, you know, so that, that's something that, that I would love to have understood and looked at as we move forward with any appointments, is that what exactly it is, is the need that we're trying to solve for with the, with the person we're putting up and, and making an appointment. But based on what I know and the feedback I've received, we really need to be looking for individuals that are, that are more than like just a, a one-issue candidate. And, and I'm not saying that the issue of, of like the kids is not important and it shouldn't be top of mind, because it is, you know, but again, we've got six people that are already committed to that issue and to resolving that issue. And so, i- if, if there's something else that needs to be worked on, I would imagine there is. I, I imagine there's probably a lot more inner workings of a library than, than, than just kids' books. So, but I, I would think that we would need to have candidates that are, that are forward-looking, who can develop and implement long-term policies and strategies that can address, like, curation, you know? Is there a curation issue that we need to solve for, we need to put policies in place for and develop? Is there somebody that, that has that background and that experience that can help guide in that process to develop a solid policy that we're not going to have this conversation month after month, year after year? We can get this thing done and put to bed. You know, is digital engagement, you know, I'm, I'm, I was actually shocked to hear there's that much activity at Hendersonville Library, but how much digital engagement is there? And what's the, what's the approach for library systems with digital engagement? Have we even thought about that, you know, if the part, part of the library is to help readership and to drive engagement there, then what are we doing on the digital side, you know? Is anybody that, that is a candidate today, or even previous candidates, any, anything they can add in that, in, in that forum, or that, that, that way? HR issues, I know a previous commissioner mentioned HR issues, and then also too, alternate funding sources, so fundraising, you know, so, I, I mean, taxpayers pay for the, the library, but, you know, are there other ways that we can fund things? Are there alternate funding sources that need to be explored, and, and folks who are qualified and have experience in that? So, and I also believe, you know, I, I think there needs to be some level of, you know, only way I know to put it is just emotional intelligence, and I'm not saying that anybody's ignorant, I, I'm, I'm just saying there, there has to be some kind of quorum that is out whenever we're interacting with folks, especially with differing points of views. We might always agree, you know, I mean, we see that here, but there's a way to disagree respectfully, and then there's a way to, to do it that's just disrespectful. And so I think those are all things that, that, that we need to look at. I know personally, that's what I look at, whenever I'm looking at candidates and trying to evaluate, you know, who may or may not be a good fit, but, you know, I, I'll just say this, like my previous library boards, the needs of the library system and the ability of the proposed candidates to fulfill those needs is what I'm going to base my decisions on. So, what I would ask is that, you know, that we split these candidates, you know, that we vote them individually, you know, because voting them together, it's, you know, we talk about not wanting to do omnibus, well, hey, this is essentially that, you know? It's all, it's all or nothing, so I, I'm going to move that we split the candidates, let's vote them separate.
Motion and a second on that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose lights sign.
No.
Place that on the board, Mr. Chairman.
Each commissioner records her vote.
Eleven noes and ten yes, so they'll stay together. Okay, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To my neighboring commissioner who spoke earlier, I, I don't disagree with some of the things he said. I hope that, or I would encourage the candidates to please engage with him, and some of the people from Hendersonville, if he votes the way you'd like him to vote, because I think you'd, you'd want to talk to him then. That, that would be my advice to them. I do plan on supporting them both. I've talked with Mr. Stockton several times, and he believes the way I believe, and I think the citizens have made it very clear how they want us to vote. I don't know Mr. Ray, but I understand that they're, the two are kind of cut from the same cloth as far as their belief system. His son spoke really well about him, he made me put my phone down to listen to him. So, he seemed like a really good kid and, and energetic, I love his spirit. But it seems like Mr. Ray's raised a, a fine young man. I hear a lot of people saying that we've got enough commissioners that think the conservative way, it's time we give some other people a voice. I don't understand that logic. The majority, the overwhelming majority of us that sit up here claim to be conservatives, and we have a directive to make our libraries reflect our community. If, if you cannot listen to the way someone who thinks opposite of you talks to you and hear their heart, then you've got a heart condition you need to work on, because we're all supposed to listen to all of our constituents. I can talk to anybody as long as they don't yell at me. Sit down and talk to them, understand their issues, and then consider their issues, and then guess what? If you are what you say you are, you're probably still going to vote conservative, but you're going to hear their heart. They may sway you, or you may find, may find a way to compromise something to make them a little bit happy, but putting people out there that you know are going to vote opposite of your beliefs, that is reckless. That is very reckless. One, one more thing that I'll say is, we had a room full of people here tonight, and a lot was talked about with regards to the different parts of the county. I hope the commissioners that served the northern part of the county were listening. I hope the commissioners that served the northern part of the county were listening, because we had a huge percentage of the northern part of the county here, and did you hear the applause when Monique, the first speaker, got done speaking about the, the Pride Christmas tree? I think that was a resounding, um, opinion of how the northern part of the county feels, and then looking at the comparison of the emails, I know exactly how I'm gonna vote, I'm not gonna disappoint my constituents, I'm not gonna disappoint 75% of Sumner County with my vote. I know how they want to be, but I'm also gonna listen to the other side when they come and talk to me about issues, and I'm gonna try to find a way that we can find any middle ground without compromising my principles. But I will vote conservative, I will vote to support these two men.
I would ask that we, uh, getting on into the evening, that we narrow our comments. Uh, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last month, we voted for somebody from the floor, didn't know anything about them. I looked up the organization, the book fair there in Nashville, looked at the sponsors, about a third of them were hard left-wing sponsors. One of them was Nashville Endowment of the Arts. If you remember, that's a taxpayer-funded organization. It was one that funded the crucifix and the jar of urine. It was also the one that funded the painting of the, uh, Virgin Mary in Elephant Dome. We didn't know this man, he hadn't been vetted, but we, this body put him through, I didn't. But I, you know, I, I, I can understand Mr. Stockton's angst. I, I, I've received a lot of emails afterwards. That was very disappointing. So I hope that we do vote for these two, uh, two men, because they do represent our values, not the values of what we voted in last month. Thank you.
Commissioner Menzel.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I, I'll just quickly answer the fact that, um, uh, the reason this board, if it seems like, if they're not focusing on other things, is because the, this commission, and commissioners, and, uh, I'll say a small vocal minority, based on the emails we've gotten, have made everything about a collection policy that people hate, or they love. Hundred and fourteen people emailed, they love it, I mean, citizens lo- love it, Christians, conservatives love it, for the most, I'll say, majority, not all of them, um, who claim to be, but this is about a policy that people don't like, so they, all they do is fight about that policy for fifteen months in emails, and make slanderous, libelous, defamatory remarks about me, other commissioners, citizens, things that aren't true, things that are just nasty and vile, that definitely don't represent our values, that definitely don't represent anything disrespectful, we don't have any respectful dialogue coming from the left. In these emails, zero, that I've received, in the negative against these gentlemen, uh, or any other. And another reason is this commission keeps rejecting candidates who are qualified, all because of a collection policy, that's what it comes down to, straight up. Had people from Westmoreland, oh, we don't know if people from Westmoreland, but the same person votes against people from Westmoreland. My gosh, I mean, this, it's just craziness. Um, so, it's, it's really simple, if you, uh, get rid of the insanity and get rid of the wokeness, and actually protect kids, which is what libraries are about, if you want to talk, everybody talks about kids, 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 and libraries, well, let's protect them, that's the goal, not expose them to sexually inappropriate graphic explicit reading materials, it's wrong, it's sin, shouldn't be doing it, it's immoral. They're not ready, that's, that's what this is about, and this is about people who support that, and the people who are, are against these candidates, they're against that policy, that's what this comes down to, this comes down to policy, when talking about policy, that's, that's what this comes down to. Um, and so, I'm voting for these guys because they support that policy, and then they can move on and do other things, like looking at increasing library hours for different libraries. But until that happens, we're gonna keep arguing over library board appointments based on conservatism and woke-ism because of a policy, and that's where we're at.
Commissioner Teichner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's an honor to be here with each one of y'all, it really is an honor, it's an honor to, to represent, but a few things were ra- few questions were raised, and I thought I could help, um, hopefully, especially to ex- explain why I vote a certain way. I know it drives half of us crazy to be here, but I always vote no to call the question, because I feel like everybody should be heard, and by everybody being heard, hopefully it means every, every citizen's being heard. So, when it comes down to why would I vote, when I, when I talk about the Lord, you know, there's always the argument of separation of church and state. We're, we're separated, there's not a mandated church, which is a good thing. But ultimately, it comes down to that I'm a Christian, I'm not perfect at all, not even close, like, the furthest, most remotely non-perfect person in the world, and I don't think that someone who's a Christ-follower would ever think that they were perfect. Number two, why would I vote for a Christian if I want to represent the rest of the county best? Because I think that there's a lot of conservatives here, all of us, actually. Um, I think I'm the only one that doesn't have anything by my name, and it's just because I had to get everybody to spell my name correctly to get on the ballot, but I, I was taken off by my own party, the Republicans, which I'll be till the day I die. But the thing is, when we come down to it, why would I vote for a Christian to represent my non-Christian neighbor? Why? Because the greatest commandment is a two-part thing, love the Lord your God, okay, that, you're following Christ, and love your neighbor as yourself. There's not a commandment to non-Christians to love anyone, let alone their neighbor. Sometimes neighbors are pretty hard to get along with, but the other thing that I'm appealing to you, for these two men, is if we're loving our neighbors ourself, and we talk about emotional intelligence, think about the emotional intelligence that would come if someone is a Christ-follower who will lay down his life, or her life, for their neighbor. Self-awareness, these are the five keys of emotional intelligence, just a quick Google search, I'm not being haughty or knowing all that, I'm just saying, self-awareness, and recognizing your own, and, you know, not being ruled by your emotions, okay? Self-regulation, that's a big one, because as a Christ-follower, I had to regulate myself and not go off the rails like, like my wicked self would want to do. Motivation, these, these men are motivated. Empathy, they have empathy for the community, and social skills, and when it comes down to it, we talked about skills, the only skill, there's nobody that came up here and asked for a better graphic designer on the library board. There's nobody that walked up here and said, I want a better curation system. All due respect, the only thing they asked is Ms. Monique back there, I'm sorry to call you out, came up here and gave the most heartfelt thing, that she wants safety and protection for her child. And these two men said, the one thing I'll do, I'll be, I'll do anything I need to do, but the one thing that's important to me is safety and protection for the children of this fine county. Vote them in.
Commissioner Beckerman.
Appreciate it. Yeah, so, going back to what I said earlier, and then a couple other folks have, have touched on it, I, to the best of my knowledge, the, of the, the current board members on the library, there's a, a retired librarian who I think rolls off later this year, uh, there's a grant writer, there's a county commissioner, there's a health and wellness coach, I believe there's a retired Secret Service, uh, person, uh, there's a, an employee from a church, uh, there's a small business owner, um, and then I think maybe a state home professional and a retiree in general. I, I just think, going back to my earlier comments, you know, to me, it makes sense, and again, the state library boards recommend that, you know, there's someone with HR, to me, it makes sense, someone with some legal background, I already talked about technology, we're gonna, the, the library, the retired librarians are gonna roll off, so someone with institutional knowledge around that side. I have a hard time believing that we can't find candidates with some of these experiences and the wisdom that can't also protect our kids. I have a hard time believing that these two candidates tonight are the only two candidates in the county that can protect our kids. I, I, I don't know, um, Mr. Ray, I don't necessarily know Mr., I've spoken with Mr. Stockton, uh, you know, after last time around or whatnot, seems to be a great guy, we, seems to have a lot in common, um, with myself. Uh, but, when I'm looking field board, when I'm looking to field board members on boards, I'm looking at, you know, what type of skill sets, or what type of experience and wisdom they can bring with them. And going back to what I said earlier, if they're not gonna protect their kids, I would, it would be an instant no, for me, because they absolutely are gonna protect my kids. But I've, again, a very, very, very hard time that in, within this county, we can't find people, strong conservatives, gonna protect our kids, but hey, they've got some HR background, they've got some legal, they've got some technology, they have that experience with the libraries. It's just, that's impossible. If anyone believed that that is the case, that, I just, I just don't understand the, the line of thought there, so thank you.
Mr. Hadd, can I?
Commissioner Jones.
Can I be in my own queue? My light, my light was just on, I just, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Stockton and Mr. Ray for putting yourself out there, because you have had derogatory comments about you, you've had derogatory comments about your wife, Mr. Stockton has, and, um, I just want to say thank you for volunteering yourselves and putting yourselves out there to be on the library board. I will be voting for both of you, because myself, as a conservative Christian, that values children and what, uh, filth goes into our children, um, I just want you to know that I do support you, and I feel like, my personal feeling, that anybody that doesn't likes filth in libraries.
Commissioner Jones.
Call the question.
All right, the question's been called, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Put it on the board to make sure we have the two firsts.
Each commissioner records your vote.
All right, we'll continue talking, we're short, vote. Commissioner Janon.
Thank you, uh, sir. Um, I would like to say something about what Mr. Beck, I, I, I don't know what district it's in, so I'm gonna have to call him by his name, Mr. Becker. So, Mr. Becker had indicated he would like to see certain things when people are nominated to the board, and, you know, as you look at what these folks have done, you know, they own businesses, one of them's a financial advisor, with lots of, lots of knowledge in finances, which sounds like Hendersonville needs a little, eh, help with that. Um, and then the other one owns a business, a multi, a millionaire, self-made millionaire, you know, when you own your own business, you're your HR guy, I know that, my husband owned a business, you have HR experience, because you have to deal with employees. We do have some boards that could use an HR person on it, but, these people are qualified, they have the experience, they have the life experience for what they're, what we're looking at. I mean, we have haggled over this for months, and last month, we, you guys, somebody brought, I don't know who it was, brought up the other guy, didn't know who he was, the madam's house cat, and, you know, I watched the library board meeting last month, and I was, had a concern about the fact that they had two books they were talking about, they were talking about them, and they didn't like it, because it was sexually explicit, some of it, and they had all voted no, that wasn't what they wanted. Well, about four, several minutes into the meeting, that gentleman decided he didn't like, he, he wanted to challenge it, and said, what about the Bible? Well, what about the Bible? Well, verse thirty-eight point six in Genesis, but that man couldn't even tell you what was in it, he couldn't say it, all he could do was throw his pen down and throw the numbers out there. Well, I got news for you, protecting children, protecting, and it's not just protecting the children, it's the mind of the child, because you don't realize what the mind of the child is gonna absorb, and the damage this will cause years later. What I'm saying is, I understand what Mr. Becker's saying, but I also understand that these people have life experience. I taught at the University of Phoenix, and I had students in my classes that had life experiences in different things, and they were getting educated to get master's degrees in business, all kinds of things, but they use that knowledge to work, they use that knowledge to work on their skill set to do what they're doing. So we're talking about a multitude of skill sets with these two gentlemen, and the number one thing, and a hill that I will die on, from my military experience, we pick battles, and we pick wars, but this a hill that I will die on, is to protect the mind of the child, and these two men have said that they will protect the mind of the child, regardless of what everybody wants in the life, you know, you want dirty books, fine, put them in the dirty book section, go back there, but this is important, like he said, he wants people that have certain skill sets, they might need this, or might, but it sounds to me like they need some financial folks, and they also need somebody, like, like he said, with HR, and both these candidates have that experience. It may not say HR in their head, but that's what they've been doing all these years. So I don't understand why there's a, a problem here, but I'm voting for them, I'm one vote, but I'm voting for them, but I want you to think about that when you vote. What is it, the number one thing that you are voting on? Is it somebody has a little bit of HR experience? Is it somebody that knows how to tell you how to balance your checkbook? Or is the number one thing that you want to vote on is protecting the mind of a child? And I don't care how many people are on a committee, regardless, it should be a hundred percent, and not, not seventy percent, that's what you should be looking for, and I will sit down, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Teichner, did you want to say something else?
Yes, just, point of information, just, just to clarify, um, last month, we voted on someone we didn't vet at all, and then also, uh, two and a half years have gone by since we've been trying to fill these spots.
All right, uh, well, let's see, Commissioner Wright.
The young lady, the citizen that got up here and spoke about her child, her toddler, she was from California, folks, she said something that hit me to the core. There ain't a whole lot of places to go. Let's not let these folks down, okay? If they want to bring their conservative values to Sumner County, let's open our arms to them, welcome them. California will take people, I don't know if you want to go, but they'll take you.
All right, I'll ask the clerk to place, uh, these names on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote?
Chairman Hadd didn't vote. Chairman Hadd didn't vote. Do you want to vote?
It won't record it, she'll have to do it. She'll have to count it.
No.
No.
That's great, ten per cent.
The clerk will take care of that.
Anyone wanting to change their vote? Anyone not voting wishing to vote?
The vote is twelve to seven, and the names fail.
I got a question, there was no abstentions.
Pardon?
There was no abstentions, right?
There was what?
No abstentions, that was nineteen votes, there's twenty-one people here. There's two people who mentioned they're voting, so if they're registered to abstentions.
You have three options in the chamber, I voted no, if that's what you're asking. But, that doesn't matter, you can just not vote, you can abstain, or you can vote yes or no. Okay. Proceed.
Item number two is Airport Authority Board, Samuel Solerzano, I so move.
All right, motion and a second, I'll place that on the board, Madam Chairman. See, no one, oh, Commissioner Sho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Who is this, who's Mr. Solerzano replacing? If I could ask, the committee chair?
Did you look at your packet?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, who's?
It's in the packet.
So, I received a note from Mr. Shepherd, and I was not able to call him back. And he had mentioned that he wished to consent, to continue serving. I'm not necessarily against Mr. Solerzano, but I just am trying to understand what the, what the reason was to replace Mr. Shepherd. Typically, when I see a name up, I kind of assume that there's a vacancy. But if the person wanted to continue serving, I just genuinely want to know. I'm probably going to vote for this person, I just kind of want to understand the background here, because Mr. Shepherd reached out.
I've never heard from Mr. Shepherd, so I can't answer that.
So, was there, so there was, there was no reason to replace him? I genuinely just want to understand what the reason.
If Mr. Becker will take the, I may have a little bit of information in regard to that.
Thank you, sir.
He is a Christian man, he is desiring to stay on the Airport Authority. Why he has not told anyone that, I don't know. I do know that he has done a good job and they want him back, but that's, I can tell you that much, that he, he's a fine person. Commissioner Schmidt? Commissioner Schmidt?
Well, I'll make this quick, based upon your insights and from what I've seen on the meetings, I see no logical reason to replace a man, and correct, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, that has thirty years of pilot experience. So, I don't see, if he's willing to serve and the Airport Authority is happy with Mr. Shepherd, I'm going to make a motion to nominate Mr. Shepherd to the Airport Authority.
The attorney reminded me that this is, someone had to be nominated because his term is up. So, he could be nominated or anyone else, but there has to be a nomination because the term is up. Motion and a second, so we have two names on the floor at this time. Any discussion, Commissioner Sho?
I'll be willing to make a, because I don't like to abstain, but I don't know that I have ever, maybe once. But, I'm willing to make a decision tonight, but I would like to make an amendment to just defer this back for one month, just to where I can understand a little bit more about both.
All right, a motion and a second, and an amendment to hold this for one month, hold it in abeyance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Put it on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
The noes have it fourteen to seven, so we will proceed with a vote after three people are in the queue, Commissioner Janong?
Thank you. I would like to say that I reached out to Mr. Shepherd. I emailed him, told him that I had gotten his email, his resume, and that I would like for him, if he could, to come to our Committee on Committee, or even to the Commission, and present himself, so we could see who he was and talk to him. And he never, ever emailed me back. And the comments that were made at the Committee on Committee, that he probably felt it was beneath him to come to that committee, I felt was kind of disingenuous, but he never emailed me back. Mr., the other gentleman that's on there is Samuel Solerzano. He is a pilot as well for Southwest, has many, many years of experience. And, you know, just like the last board appointments that we berated over, sometimes it's good to have a change. And Mr. Solerzano has all the experience necessary to be on that board. Like I said last time, last month, when you guys brought somebody forward who was not vetted for the board, we didn't know if he flew an airplane or he didn't fly an airplane. So, I would suggest that since Mr. Shepherd didn't email, at least give me the courtesy to email me back or come and check us out, and let us check him out, I just don't think that's a good thing, you know? So, I don't, I'm not voting for him, I'm going to vote for Mr. Solerzano.
Commissioner Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We put Mr. Solerzano on the committee last December of twenty-three. And in this chamber, Mr. Harris was sitting in the back row. His name got nominated, he got enough votes, I found that kind of suspicious. But he was here, didn't speak. And Mrs. Solerzano was recommended by Mr. Javonce, who's a Southwest pilot. Mr. Solerzano is a professional Southwest pilot. I mean, I think it's a great addition to the Airport Board. And this is, I guess this would be the third time that his nomination would, has been, I guess, changed from the floor, or somebody's been brought forward. So, I don't know if there's, he's come and spoken to the meeting over a year ago. I don't know what anybody has against Mr. Solerzano, but, and I don't know who is replacing at the time, because it's the third time, you know, it's come through for him to give him a chance. But, you know, third times charm, or three strikes you're out, I guess, at this point. So, I'm going to be voting for Mr. Solerzano, based on his qualifications. We don't want to talk about qualifications all night, but then somebody who's highly qualified, a commercial airline pilot for Southwest is going to get voted down. Just, the hypocrisy and irony is just not lost on me, thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yeah, two things. One, I feel like we've been preached out about how many emails we receive. And I went back and looked, and we all received an email on August the nineteenth from Mr. Shepherd, saying he wanted to be reappointed to the Airport Board. Whether you didn't read it or not, that's up to you, but he did express interest to all of us. Also, I'd like to debunk that someone is not vetted if they don't get a recommendation or go through a committee. At the end of the day, they are vetted if this body feels like they are a good point. Whether, again, it was the same thing last month with the appointment on the library board of, we didn't know this person from Adam's Cat, which I like that phrase. I'm going to have to, I've heard Adam, but not Adam's Cat. I'm going to have to use that. But, I think we're going to have to, at the end of the day, do our own homework and not always rely on our committee process to serve up everything, all the information on a silver platter. I know that's what I do, several other commissioners, I want to commend Commissioner Klein. I feel like he always does a great job of digging in and making sure that he does his homework on that. But to throw accusations of, they did or did not, but then I can do an email search in five minutes and find it, is pretty frustrating.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got a guy here that clearly wants to be on the board. They've got the email from the other one, says he wants to be on the board, but he was invited to the job interview and didn't come. I don't understand that. We, I trust my Committee on Committee members to do the interviewing process, and then I can watch it, listen in, hear their recommendations, and he didn't come. I don't know anything about him. We're in the same position we are with the last library board candidate we approved, with no knowledge about them, I can't vote for this person. I got to hear something about him. We know that both of them are pilots with, you know, years of flying under their belt. Whether that makes them a good committee person to be on that board, I don't know. But I have to trust my Committee on Committees representatives that I put in that position to do this job. So, I'll be supporting their pick.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, there was a comment made earlier, and it was on, Mr. Shepherd felt that coming to the committee was beneath him. Did we get a communication from him that stated that?
Pardon?
So, it was stated earlier that Mr. Shepherd felt that coming to the committee was beneath him. Did we receive a communication from him stating that?
I really don't know. And I was the one that, I guess Commissioner Janong was talking about being disingenuous, but I had made that statement based on the fact, and I went on to state that in all past commissions, if a person had performed their job, they automatically rolled over because they had the job performance as a committee member. But I was the one who made that statement.
Okay. And then also, too, there was some comments made about, we don't know, we still don't know the qualifications of the person that was last approved. And I find it just, it's almost ironic that we asked this person to come up, for the rules to be suspended, for them to come up, to go through their qualifications, answer any questions, and this body voted to not do that. So, we didn't want to know. So, I think that's, it's just another one of those where it's like, we just, you know, we only want to recognize the things we want to recognize, just like the email that Commissioner Lambert pointed out, that, you know, Mr. Shepherd has, he's expressed interest. So, and then also, too, I do find it interesting that Mr. Javonce is who recommended Mr. Solerzano. And in speaking with the Airport Authority Chairperson, I don't believe that Mr. Javonce has been to a single meeting. So, oh, he's been to one meeting, okay, so been to one meeting since his appointment. So, I don't necessarily know that that speaks well to anyone at this point.
Let's keep this narrow, I want to try to hit the front door, but twelve.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no, there were just comments made, and so I thought I would add a little context to some of that. So, appreciate you for indulging me, thanks, sir.
Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, I just, just commenting on, if there was only one candidate, and Mr., forgive me for mispronouncing, but Solerzano was the candidate, I don't have any problems with his experience here. But knowing, and we all got the email, I was going to mention, we got the email from Mr. Shepherd, we know he's interested, he's been on there. I, last week, I had the pleasure of going to Ellis Middle School for an event they had. They brought in a lot of community folks and so forth, I won't go down, it was a great event, if anybody wants to talk about it. But, but I happened to be in the same room with one of the Airport Authority members. And I wasn't asking her, she was telling me that, about Mr. Shepherd and so forth, and how it would be good, you know, maintain on the board and so forth. So, because there's two people in one spot, they're both have some qualifications. So, this is not like, well, this person does have qualifications, this person doesn't. This is, it's not the case at all. So, I wish we would quit comparing apples to oranges, just to make our comments sound better. But I'll be supporting Mr. Shepherd.
All right, we'll place those names on the board, Mr., the, pardon? Commissioner Schmidt?
My comments are actually going to be a little bit shorter, because Commissioner Becker stole a little of my thunder. I was at that same event with him, at the Great Shake, I believe it was, at Ellis Middle School, and had a chance to speak with her, too, and she had all positives on her. And real quick, I mean, in the private industry, if I got a person that's managing a route for my customers in different regions, and they're doing, and all my stores are happy, I want to keep them there. I don't have a reason to go seek out their replacement, even though those contracts could be a year or two years, in my particular situation, we're just going to re-up them. With here, I mean, I don't know, I have no reason to believe that Mr. Shepherd wouldn't be a good fit. I mean, he's done a good job. And finally, I'll just say, I think there's something we're also voting on that received positive recommendation from the Committee on Committees on three, and someone can correct me if I'm mistaken, but on number seven, I think these three gentlemen received a positive recommendation, because they're doing a good job, and they're a best fit for Sumner County and to serve the citizens. So, they're doing a good job, so it's kind of along the same lines as what we're doing here. So, thank you.
All right, on the board, Mr. Mansfield?
I was just going to say that Mr. Solerzano, his process got hijacked over a year ago, and that's not comparing to number seven, the same people continuing on. I just think it's an apples-to-orange comparison, an unfair comparison, so I'll be voting for Mr. Solerzano.
Okay, Mr. Solerzano on the board will be the green, and Mr. Shepherd will be red. The committee's recommendation will be green, and Mr. Shepherd will be red.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Okay, neither one is elected, so the position will remain open. Now, before we go on with the committee report, I want to make a correction on the previous vote. The previous vote was actually thirteen, due to a vote not being recorded. So, the two gentlemen who were here and the recommendation of the committee, they were elected by thirteen votes. Mr. Brown's vote was not properly recorded by the machine. Okay, proceed. Pardon?
So, he voted yes, but it showed up as no, is that what happened?
He voted yes, but it wasn't recorded at all, and that's been checked by the two ladies here. So, they confirmed it, and the attorney said we could go ahead and make the correction.
But you and Mr. Nguyen did not vote?
I did vote.
It did, it felt like it didn't?
No, ours didn't either, but I told the clerk. Well, ours didn't either, but I told the clerk he didn't know about his vote. Now, Mr. Nguyen, how did you vote? It wouldn't make any difference really how we voted.
It was 12 to 7 without y'all's two.
Yeah, he got 13 votes.
I trust you, but I don't understand.
Pardon?
Mr. Nguyen said he didn't record a vote either.
That's what I'm saying. The math, it was 12 to 9, y'all's two didn't show, so that's 2 to 1.
The vote on the board was 12 to 7.
12 to 7, right.
Your vote did not record, and you announced a no vote.
Right.
And Mr. Brown's vote did not record, but Mr. Nguyen said he didn't record a vote either, so the math doesn't add up.
The math does not add up?
Not if Mr. Nguyen did not record a vote.
I misunderstood what you all had told me then.
No, we weren't aware that Mr. Nguyen, there's no way to pull up the vote.
All right. So we will know, folks, in the morning if we had the 13 votes, where they'll have to pull it up from the machine. Sorry about that, but the machine just did not record it.
If there's 13, there was 12 positive votes, Mr. Brown said, that's 13.
Exactly. Doesn't matter the no vote.
Mr. Jones has it right here.
It's 12 to 7.
Bob Brown is green, Wes Johnson is gray.
Okay, so Commissioner Brown's different. It's Commissioner Nguyen.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a recess?
Just one moment, folks.
He voted green. He voted yes, 12 votes. Nguyen did not vote, so he's either no or does not vote.
That's the only thing.
Were there 13?
No.
No.
Commissioner Brown's different. Commissioner Nguyen's different.
All right. I apologize. I was told one thing and evidently that was incorrect. It appears that Mr. Nguyen's vote was the one that was not recorded and that Mr. Brown's vote was recorded according to a picture of the voting board by, and we'll know for sure tomorrow, but by the voting board that Mr. Commissioner Jones pulled. So it was 12 votes. All right. But we'll know for sure tomorrow, but it appears from what Commissioner Jones has that it was this vote that was not recorded. All right. Proceed.
Okay. Ethics and Conduct Committee, one-year term, Robert Brown, Jeremy Mansfield, Dr. Mary Junong, Kimberly Overton, and Anharid Irving Jones, make a motion to group and approve.
Motion to group and approve is made. And a second, Commissioner Schmidt?
Based upon your recommendations, which you said earlier, I'm gonna motion to send this to whatever committee you were talking about to look into this. I mean, for the record, the two citizen nominees here, I know one very well. I'm confident in Ms. Overton. I've known her for years. I know the other one. I'm confident that she's all legit. I'm not saying the others aren't, but, you know, with your concerns, I think we need to send this back and look into it.
I have no problem with any of the people here. My problem is, I think we need to look at the entire thing, is how it's made up and what the jurisdiction is, which I think is too encompassing, but that it was to go back to legislative. I was gonna make a motion at legislative. So there's a motion to hold this. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For this?
Aye.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just based on what he said, I believe what you said, Mr. Chairman, I respectfully have to disagree. The policy that was put forward was the same one that's always been since 2008, the CTA policy. So you referenced something about public utility boards or something. Well, if there's something in there at TCA, it's because CTA put it in there. The only thing that we modified was the Ethics and Conduct portion of how to self-govern ourselves, because there were issues with previous commissioners illegally campaigning on school grounds, and there's no recourse of action there for some of those things. Those are written in as a provision to basically, to kind of ensure that that didn't happen. As far as the makeups, it's the same amount of people that was there before. I respectfully have to disagree, especially if anybody, I don't know, who maybe planted a seed or brought this to your attention, but I believe they would be wrong, I guess. Or they'd have to go argue with CTA, since anything dealing with a public utility was put in there from a CTA model thing. Again, CTA give you an option. Adopt ours altogether, create your own altogether, or you can do a hybrid. We kind of did a hybrid. It's more like an 80/20, 80-part CTA, or maybe 85% CTA, 15%. What we kind of retooled based on complaints from citizens from previous ethics, failures of Ethics and Conduct Committees. So I don't, I agree with what you had said earlier respectfully, or whatever information you got, I think was misinformation.
Whatever is decided here, I could care less, but I'm just saying, there are two things that I want to look at. Number one, it does say, our policy does say, and it may have come from that, but we had to take responsibility for what we adopted. It says something about judicial, which is no way we can touch that. It says public utility districts, which is a quasi-public thing, that we have no authority, only their board has authority over that. So my suggestion was that we just look at this and we may say, hey, we're happy with it, that's okay, or whatever we want to do. But that's my suggestion and whatever the, I respect the decision of the commission always have, and whatever they want to do is fine. But I think we ought to be in alignment with the law regardless.
It was from CTA, so I mean, they provided it from the law.
I'd like for CTA to try to regulate through the commission a public utility district and see what happens. Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Harrison?
Manz on the main.
Pardon?
My comments are on the main motion.
Commissioner Schmidt?
I'll just really quickly say this to everyone. Everyone may not realize this, but, you know, we always, another commissioner will say, what will break if we don't do anything about it, a situation tonight? Nothing's gonna break, because if it was that urgent, this was up, if I'm not mistaken, in September to be, for this next Ethics Committee to be formed. So, and I'm not saying they did anything nefarious, meaning Committee on Committees, I'm not saying they failed to do this, to get this together. I'm just saying, it's been sitting like this since September. So what's gonna break if we just go by Chairman Hyde's recommendation, who has obviously got a lot more experience than any of us sitting on the floor tonight? Nothing's gonna break, so.
Commissioner Becker?
Is the, is, since you're the one that brought it, your concern, you know, mentioned your concern, my question is to you then, is could we, could we go ahead and vote on this, but then also still look into the policy? Or are you suggesting that the policy may, may make this, this committee null and void?
Well, I would truly like to see, my personal opinion, which may not match this, the majority of the people here, but my personal opinion is, we should regulate ourselves, just like Congress does.
So not need a committee?
Pardon?
So, so your opinion is that this committee is not needed in that, from that standpoint?
No, I think a committee is needed. I think it's a good idea, but I think it should be commissioners.
Oh, commissioners only. Okay, I got you. Okay, yeah, I'm in favor of waiting then to hold off.
Commissioner Jones? All right. We'll place that on the board. Commissioner Teichner?
Mr. Hyde, I believe, according to CTA, I don't think we're able to do that. I don't believe that's legal for us. I'm not, not 100% positive, but I think I read when I was preparing for this.
And that's probably a very good reason to put this off and check that out.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's possible for commissioners to do it. So I think we should vote them in, is what I'm saying, so.
All right. There will be a yes or no on this amendment?
The problem is, you can resist it when the committee does all that, because it's already by a resolution, but that's not gonna alleviate you from having the members, if their terms are open, they need to be filled, and then you can do whatever you want.
Okay. All right. Are you ready? Commissioner Jones?
There's a little bit of confusion. I can hear some other commissioners murmuring as well. The slate of candidates is solid. The only question is the procedures or the rules of the committee that were adopted. I don't understand why we don't just go ahead and vote on the slate of candidates and then revisit the procedures and rules, and if they change, then we change the makeup of the committee. I don't understand not voting on them if...
Well, then you just vote no.
Well, I mean, if, then my, then my amendment would be to split this and go ahead and vote the commissioners in and then look at the citizens next.
All right. Motion and a second, so to amendment number two. That's two on the floor, and that's all we're allowed to have. His amendment is to go ahead and vote for the commissioners, and then we will deal with the citizens.
Oh, I withdraw on a second. I misunderstood.
All right. You do not have a second then? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second.
Hold on.
Let's, wait.
I do, and then we worry about the rules later. He told me no.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, sir, thank you. If we vote this amendment down, that's exactly what's gonna happen, so there's really no need for the amendment. Just vote up or down, and then we'll know.
I agree. There's no, no reason for it, but it's been made and we have to deal with it, so we'll put that on the board, seeing no one here, we'll vote.
So, for just point of, I'm sorry, just for point of clarification, in case it can get a little confusing, we're voting on your recommend, my amendment, you know, my motion.
No, we're not. We're voting on amendment number two, which would fill the commission slots, but not the citizens.
Yeah, I'll withdraw, make it simple, get the personnel.
All right. We're back on the First Amendment to postpone this. All right. Put it on the board before anybody else.
Each commissioner records your vote.
It looks like it's split sort of right down the middle. So we're back to the first one and we're ready to, Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make the amendment.
Actually, that's not correct. Let me restate that. I'd like to nominate a different slate.
Altogether?
Altogether. I'd like to nominate as a slate Commissioners Lambeth, Commissioner Bergdorf, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Wright, and Citizen Overton. That's my amendment.
All right. A motion and a second. Seeing no one in the queue, we will vote on those two slates then. Slate number one, recommended by the committee. Slate number two, that you just addressed. Commissioner Shoef?
I might be a little, I probably am confused, getting late, but the previous amendment effectively made it that we were not going to vote. I thought that that basically made it that we were not gonna vote on these as a slate.
No, that was, my motion was just to wait a month until I could present a recommendation of letting.
Okay, so we are, we are still within order to have these two dueling.
Yeah, right.
Understood.
All right. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's the makeup of the committee? Is there supposed to be two citizens on there, or what is the makeup? So the first, the second slate's not even qualified to the rules of the Ethics Committee. So that's, that's not possible. That committee can't be voted on. It's out of compliance with the policy of the...
Well...
The current policy's written so that it's two citizens and...
Commissioner, so that would be technically out of order and not germane to the vote.
Well, that's one reason I wanted to hold this off until we could just review the entire thing, but we would either have to have a slate with another citizen on it or according to this. Are you in agreement with that, Mr. Chairman?
The last resolution says five commissioners or citizens shall be appointed to hold their terms. That's under...
Okay. We're okay with your slate. It says it's five citizens or commissioners. So, all right, we'll be voting on those two things after Mr. Shoef.
I was just gonna make the second slate match the first one with three and two by removing Mr. Lambeth. This is my amendment, and adding Ms. Jones. So that, that's my amendment.
Adding who?
I would add, the two citizens would be the same, Ms. Overton and Ms. Jones. We would slightly change the, Ms. Irvin Jones, and we would slightly change the commissioners. So the commissioners would be Bergdorf, Rogers, Wright. The citizens would be Overton and Jones.
All right. You understand this amendment? Is there a second? Do you second that? Motion and a second. Commissioner Teichner? What does that mean?
Mr. Chairman, I said, I just made an accident, but I think that we're gonna get to the point that, that we've already gotten to. It was silly. All of us, myself included.
What are you saying?
I think we should just vote on this.
Slate. That's what we did, sir.
I agree. All right. The amendment is on the board.
Which one is green or is it red?
To add another slate here. Is that, is that the right thing to do, to accept the slate?
He did his amendment to Harrison to remove Lambeth and add the second slate.
Okay. So, so we will accept, the amendment is to accept the amended slate. All right. So it's a green or a red vote. That's simple enough for us.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Overwhelming vote, more than two-thirds on that, so we settled on that. Do we need to vote on that? We don't now.
We have now the two slates that we have to vote for.
Okay. All right. So now he says we have the two slates, the one you just voted for or the other. Yes will be for the committee slate, red will be for Commissioner Harrison's slate.
Each commissioner records your vote.
And that passes with 13 votes. Okay, you can proceed.
Number four, Committee on Committees, David Klein for a one-year term. I so move.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
No.
Okay, put it on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Commissioner Klein receives 15 votes. All right.
Number five is Tourism Board, Tracy Cannon, one-year term, and this was the actual, the recommendation from the Tourism Board.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Number six is Agricultural Extension Service, Chad.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
I was gonna group and approve the three.
Pose. All right.
So I so move.
Second. She's on number seven.
All in favor? Pose like sign.
Number seven is Emergency Communications District Board. Moved to group and approve for all three?
All in favor, say aye. Pose like sign. All right. Moving right along, Legislative Committee. Number one, really, we're just, it's to be able to offer them something. So we don't need to talk about this. All in favor, say aye. Pose. Let's get it on the floor. Okay. On the board. Who is the motion? We're on number one.
2501-12, authorize law director make proposal to elect commission as to the relocation election commission. I so move.
All right. Motion and a second. So now put it on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
I moved to group and approve.
And that, that receives 15 votes. Okay.
I moved to group and approve all of the items that were moved off of the consent agenda during.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Nguyen? No? Why did you pull it off?
Don't, hey, just vote.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
That concludes my report. I moved to group and approve everything on budget.
All in, all in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
All in favor, say aye.